I think we're going to get this committee of the whole started here for January 28th. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting. Board members, members of the public, thank you for taking the time this evening to learn more about our comprehensive district design. The topic of our extended meeting tonight, obviously, is the comprehensive district design. And I just want to note that rather than ending our meeting at 8:00 PM, we recognize that we have a lot of information that we want to present to the full board this evening. And so, we're willing to continue as necessary up till 9:00 PM tonight, so we can ensure we get everything covered this evening. As most of you know, the comprehensive district design, more commonly known as the CDD, examines every aspect of how we educate children here in Minneapolis Public Schools. And we're doing this because we want to create conditions for success in all of our schools. That's how we see this design, as a starting point of a journey for creating conditions for success for all students. I believe, and I know many of you believe also, that the future of our Minneapolis community and of our school district depends on us being able to deliver a well-rounded education for our students. I do want to also acknowledge that I recognize the significant impacts the comprehensive district design presents for all of us. But I see this as my responsibility, obligation, as a superintendent, to find a way to ensure that every child, including those who are not well-served by our system, that every child has access to the schools' programs, opportunities, and experiences they deserve. And you've all seen the data, and I just want to again remind you that this data is significant. If your child is a student of color, there's a 50% chance, sometimes much greater, that they aren't getting the educational experiences and support they need to be successful. And in that context, 2/3 of our students in Minneapolis Public Schools are students of color. So that's why we've created this comprehensive district design. I also want to acknowledge that this has been a journey of uncertainty to this point. Our work has changed since the first time we began this conversation and made our design information public last year. But I want you to know that those changes are because we're listening. We can only be successful if we join together to support our students. And so, I hope what you'll hear tonight is that the comprehensive district design is really about our values. It's a value proposition. To the board directors, we're working hard to create a structure that honors the values you laid out for us in your resolution, and we're also turning to our community to better understand how we can also recognize and support their values through our infrastructure, our instruction, our programming, and our budget. You'll hear a few items mentioned tonight that I want to, I just want to raise a couple of points to. First of all, we're going to be talking tonight about school attendance areas and boundaries, and we will be placing maps of all of our schools soon on our website if they're not up there already. But I hope you'll note that these boundaries have been modeled based on integrating our schools by race and income. So that's the foundation for how we created those boundaries. We'll also be talking a little bit of how our, about how our middle schools feed into our high schools, and this will be new information for many people. Again, this is a starting point, and so, as we roll this information out, we also want to remember and recognize that we're going to be looking at placing our CTE, or Career Technical Education, conversation into the mix in a couple of weeks as well. So, that will also layer in factors around our feeder patterns for our high schools. So, thank you again for your attention tonight. Look forward to having the conversation with the board members. And I also want to note one small housekeeping detail. There's a lot of information as we're presenting this evening. Some of it's quite complex, and we will have interpreters interpreting simultaneously for some of our members of the public. And so, I'm going to ask that you please do your best to speak slowly and clearly, both in your presentations and with your questions. And with that, I will go ahead and ask the group of senior leadership staff who are here this evening to introduce themselves before we begin our presentation.
Good evening. My name is Amy Fearing. I'm the Senior Academic Officer, and I'm going to see if I can rearrange this mic so I'm not sitting in this awkward position.
Hello, Karen Tavat, Chief Operations Officer.
Good evening, Rochelle Cox, Associate Superintendent for Specialized Programming.
And Eric Moore, Chief of Accountability, Research, and Equity.
I was just going to say thank you again for your introduction. Thank you for your information you're going to be sharing this evening. And I was going to turn it over to you with one, one also kind of point to note with the board. We have broken this presentation into different sections. And so, with your permission, Chair, we were hoping to have the team present on a section, and then we would pause for maybe 10 to 15 minutes of clarifying questions around that present, around that section, and then we would move on to the next section and get clarifying questions, and then the final section. And then after that, we could take additional questions. But we wanted to make sure we covered the information thoroughly with the board before we got into some details.
And so, good evening, board members, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Superintendent Graff. We have our goals tonight. Is this working? We got to do it manual? All right.
Happy to.
Thank you. All right. So, our goals for the evening is, we want to just talk about the compelling why and ground us in some of the context regarding the comprehensive design. This has been a process that's gone on about 18 months, and we've had a number of conversations, iterations, and so, but the core values behind this will, has remained the same. So, we'll have a chance to talk about that. We'll share additional modeling of school types and boundaries. We'll talk about additional considerations. For example, where's integration? What are the benefits of integration? We'll have a chance to talk about walk zones. Critical piece that our community has asked us to examine in terms of why families are leaving, one of the issues is safety. And so, we'll talk about how we believe our walk zones can address some of those concerns. We'll share some academic considerations supporting the models. And so, Chief Fearing will have an opportunity to talk about K-8 versus 6-8 programming opportunities. We'll also talk about magnet and community school opportunities. There's some really innovative opportunities for our students. For example, as part of the STEAM and arts pathways, and then the CTE considerations. We'll also, Associate Superintendent Cox will talk about special education program modeling in the context of the design, and then we'll also have a chance to look at engagement. So, why a design? And you've seen this before, but I think it is a good grounding. As a district, our current structure deprives our significant number of students from a well-rounded education. In our district, there are, depending on the school that you attend, there is variability in the academic experience. We fundamentally believe as a, as a school district, as both staff and teachers, leadership, that we can't tinker around the edges anymore, and that maintaining the status quo is unacceptable. We have an achievement gap, and we'll talk about that tonight. Roughly 55 points between our white students and many of our students of color. That's a gap that hasn't moved, hasn't moved in over a decade. And so, we need to do systemic work, and so, this is why we're here. We want all of our students to be equipped with the knowledge in three areas of academics, social-emotional learning skills, and career life experiences. So, our data tells us significant gaps in achievement, significant gaps in our graduation rates by race as well as income. And so, there is a predictability in our school district based on the skin color and the zip code as to what your academic experience will be and also your academic outcomes. So, our current reality, as I mentioned before, our racial and economic achievement gaps continue in Minneapolis Public Schools. They haven't moved significantly. Many of you have been on the board year after year as I've had the opportunity to share data, and so, I think we've all been, obviously, significantly frustrated in our lack of ability to address those issues. We also know that students, not all students receive a well-rounded education. We talked about there's inconsistencies, and Dr. Fearing will share some of those inconsistencies and how they vary school to school. Our Equity Diversity Impact Assessment Committee has done some really strong work looking at policies and structural racism, and how certain policies, procedures reinforce this some of the structural inequalities. We had an opportunity to hear about, for example, our Human Resource Equity Diversity Impact Assessment. We've recently heard about our placement protocols Equity Diversity Impact Assessment, and with significant portions of populations aren't participating in the choice process. And so, we also know that our magnet schools aren't effectively reducing segregation. There's various definitions of integration. What I can tell you is that we spent significant dollars of integration to reduce, according to the state definition, the number of racially identifiable schools. I've been there eight years, and I've reported each year that those, number of racially identifiable schools have not changed. So, we sit here again, and we have not made a dent in the number of racially identifiable schools. And as a reminder, those are schools that are 86% or more students of color. And we've also heard arguments to balance, you know, black students, white students don't necessarily have to sit next to each other. The unfortunate reality in our district is there's a high correlation between race and poverty. And so, when you have schools with high concentrations of race, 86% or above, you're also seeing significant proportions of schools that are 80% or more free of lunch. And that presents challenges in spite of our teachers working strong and in an excellent way. That is a structural issue that, that we can address. Families continue to leave Minneapolis Public Schools, talking about for reasons of academic rigor, safety, culture, and climate that aren't affirming to who they are, their own identities. We are, we'll talk a bit about a culture and climate framework we're developing, but those are areas that we believe that we can address. And so, we'll hear some of the opportunities that we have in that area. And again, roughly last year, 1,200 students left the district. 80% of those are families of color. We have complicated start and end times, which means that if you are a student, for example, that has a 9:30 start time in one of your schools, you may not be able to access after-school programming. And so, that lack of access to programming impacts the parents' willingness to enroll their students in those particular schools in some cases. So, our current business, way of doing business is also not sustainable over time. So, in the context of this comprehensive design, we're also having conversations about a $19 million gap. And two years ago, we also had conversations about a significant gap. And so, the challenge is how do we have academic excellence, provide a well-rounded education for all children, as well as balance our budget? And so, that's what we believe the comprehensive design can help us address. Now, one of the things that we felt as a team that is important to point out before we get into the models is that we have been doing ongoing equity work. There's a comprehensive design, and then there's also the core work that we do based upon our values, so the ongoing work. And what will, next year, you're going to see an additional investment, for example, in a K-2 math and literacy initiatives. You recall our priorities, four priorities are literacy, multi-tiered systems of support, equity, and social-emotional learning. So, we're going to do an additional investment in our Title I for some of our schools with the highest proportions of free and reduced lunch, to really focus on the K-2 literacy. So, that will be occurring next year. In April, we will have a culture and climate framework with an increased focus on restorative practices, and we're working with our Minnesota Federation, Minneapolis Federation of Teachers on restorative practices, and we're very optimistic that we can come up with a framework that declares as a district our values about how adults interact with adults, how adults interact with students, how adults interact, most importantly, with families. And again, there's variability, and we've heard the stories across the district, and so, that's something that we can get right. The goal is to do staff training on these values, on these beliefs, this framework. Our hope is summer 2020, August 2020, that we declare with a set of standards and a framework where everyone in the district buys into and hears about what acceptable practices is for engaging with each other. Strengthening an agreement to better serve our American Indian students, so there's a memorandum of agreement with our American Indian community, and so, we're going to strengthen that. We're expanding ethnic studies. You've been part of conversations. Culturally relevant curriculum and pedagogy, there's been some additional investments on our integration budget for cultural-relevant curriculum. Continued commitment to recruitment and retention of staff of color has been significant investments to our Human Resource Department over the past two years. In particular, if you recall, last year, we had our Equity Diversity Impact Assessment. And so, you'll see next year a couple of exciting things. For example, a high school pathway where we're trying to get more students of color interested and excited about becoming teachers of color. You will see a teacher equity plan. In fact, that teacher equity plan will be presented to World's Best Workforce next month, which really identifies those schools that are having the most challenging experiences staffing, and so, we're going to dedicate staff to support those schools and filling vacancies and having the strongest teachers and having school profiles. You're going to see principal pipeline development in partnership with the Wallace Foundation, really focusing significantly more on principal leadership. We know principals make a huge difference in setting the tone, the climate, and we know that the theory of action is when you have strong leadership and they set the climate, and then you start seeing teachers that are retained and they're excited about the work they do, and then you see academic achievement gains. And we've seen that in schools in our district in which you've seen that model occur. We are continuing to gather and act upon youth and parent voice through Equity Diversity Impact Assessment, our parent participatory evaluation, our youth participatory evaluation, and citywide government. And so, we hope before the year ends that we will have our youth evaluators and citywide student government talk about some of the exciting work that they're doing as well. So, designing for comprehensive systems change. As you recall, and this is in the appendix, the full resolution, but in October 2019, you passed a board resolution giving direction and guidance for the district on the comprehensive design. It reaffirmed the rationale for structural and policy change, directed to superintendent and through him, leadership, and bringing forth a set of recommendations for board action. Declared values and guiding principles to be incorporated, in particular, around integration and the ability for our students to work together, to learn together. And so, the full resolution is in the appendix. As mentioned, this work has taken place since December 2017, and you see the ongoing work regarding the design. We've had a Human Resource Equity Diversity Impact Assessment. We've had an initial CDD proposal that we sent out to the community for engagement. The community came back and said we wanted to focus more on integration, hence leading to the board resolution as mentioned. We, in October 2019, Phase One of the boundary study, in Phase One, we went back just to a community school model. The next presentation, you see we had Equity Diversity Impact Findings and Recommendations regarding placement protocols. Phase Two in December, we had magnet conversations, what happens when you layer on magnets and centralized magnets. And then, of course, we're doing feedback, so the ongoing feedback from a study. So, starting with the study, tonight you'll see five models. Those five models, we're currently in the process, actually, last night, we went to the previous night, Northeast Middle School, we had a chance to present to a number of folks. We've also had engagement with various school communities, and so, that work continues undoubtedly throughout this month, and then, and will inform a recommendation that'll go to the board in March for feedback, conversation, fully anticipating that the board will provide feedback, final vote in April. We have committed to, as we do the engagement, we will summarize the engagement opportunities, and then as we present in March, share with you and the board on the recommendation how we're using community feedback to inform the recommended model. So, just know that that is coming your way. So, before we get into the model, into looking at the models, there are three goals, and so, the first is to strategically place magnets in the center of the city. So, this concept of centralizing magnets, we believe by centralizing magnets and really focusing on the infrastructure of the city, the central city, for example, Abbott, and our downtown arts community, our northeast arts community, I mean, there's some really are accessing our Spanish-speaking communities. There are opportunities to do really innovative and integrated magnet programming. We believe that by centralizing magnets, we can provide a more equitable experience for our students. We also believe, and will share tonight, that you'll also see, in addition to our magnets being more innovative and integrated, we'll also have more opportunities for students to participate in our magnet programs. And so, conservatively, there'll be 500 more seats, maybe up to 1,000 more seats for students to participate in our integrated programming. And so, we're really excited about that. We're modeling to decrease the number of schools above 80% poverty. We believe that supports academic achievement and equity. Decrease the number of schools above 86% students of color or white. Reducing transportation costs, for example, in integration, taking those dollars, reinvesting that into programming for our students. So, in a very real way, our students will experience this work, right? And so, shifting from transportation costs to student programming, materials for students, experience for students, we believe that that's aligned to our values. So, there's five models for community feedback, and Model 1, we'll go in-depth with Model 1, and that's our current state. What we'll discuss as we get into Models 2 through 5, there'll be some variations of the K-5, 6, 8 community schools, but then there'll be some variations of strand programming. There'll be variations of perhaps adding a third magnet, and then K-8 schools. Okay, so I just want to begin with that. But Model 1 is keeping our existing structure. And so, obviously, that can mean some drastic changes to keep our budgets balanced and to remain operationally effective. What does that look like? That may look like changing some of the funding sources we currently have, such as Title I and integration, perhaps changing the percentage of free and reduced lunch, the percent that qualify. For example, you could raise the threshold in Title up from 40% to 60 or 70%, because with the idea that if we can't reduce the number of schools with less than 80% free and reduced lunch, then we can give more resources to those locations. Limiting over-enrollment and oversubscribed schools, there may be some boundary changes in certain attendance areas. We may incur, if we keep our current state, Model 1 existing structure, maybe increasing how far students walk to school. We, it may mean closing a significant number of schools whose enrollment and other factors not support the ability to provide a well-rounded education without additional subsidies. And as a reminder, with our Equity Diversity Impact Assessment placement protocols, one of the things that we want to make sure is that as we have those conversations about school closures, we're not, if we're making recommendations of closing schools, if you stick with Model 1, that that isn't happening in just certain parts of the city. We want to make sure that we're not disproportionately impacting, for example, north, northeast portion of cities because of policies that we have that in some cases have created conditions where those schools have high levels of churn in terms of staff and decline in enrollment. Model 2, community schools with centralized magnets and strand bilingual programming. Okay, and if you recall, in December, with our magnet programs, the first iteration of the, of the design, Jefferson was identified, I believe, as a STEAM program, and then Anderson was identified as an emergent, so we swapped that, we'll go more in-depth into that. But our great configurations were K-5, 6, 8, and then we'll have two-way strand programming in up to three select community schools. So, we believe strongly in bilingual education for our Spanish-speaking families. That's a value, and so, there's different ways to offer that. You offer that through your dual-language emerging programming, through magnets, or you can do strand programming. Okay, and with our strand program, which you can imagine, you'll have basically a school-within-school model, and you would place that school-within-school model, so English-speaking, non-English-speaking, right? And that would be a portion of the school. The other portion of the school would be a regular English-speaking classroom. And so, those are very challenging to operate, and so, there's a lot of variables. I will share with you in terms of pros and cons, that having a strand bilingual programming model, it'll cost about $1 million per, per location. Okay, so, so that, that is a fairly expensive approach, but that's an option. Your, your strand program, we would locate those programs in the southern part of the city, south-central, in locations that have high populations of Spanish-speaking population. So, the idea is that that serves those communities. Model 3, community schools with centralized magnets, and then in this model, we're adding the third, an additional Spanish immersion magnet, and so, this is an addition from Model 2. So, we're replacing the strand programming, and now we're going to just do a K-5 magnet. And I, we've identified within this presentation as Green Central would be that third K-5 magnet. Model 4, community schools, centralized magnets. You'd have your strand programming, but here you're adding a limited K-8 magnets. And so, as we've done engagement and talked to folks, there is some conversations, Dr. Fearing will go more in-depth, between the value of a 6A versus a K-8. And so, this Model 4 is doing the strand programming, but then we're adding K-8 magnets. Those K-8 magnets would be right now identified at Seward, which is currently a K-8, so it would be Seward, and then Sullivan. So, Sullivan would be a K-8 STEAM. So Sullivan would be a K-8 STEAM. And then, Model Five, Centralized Magnets, we do the third K-5 Spanish immersion magnet, and then you'd have your limited K-8 magnets at the locations that I'd previously mentioned, Seward and Sullivan. And so, they all have pros and cons. Wanted to draw your attention to other changes in the magnet programming regarding the themes. And so, again, magnets are an opportunity to provide thematic instruction. Magnets, we use magnets for integration purposes, right? We use, we're able to use federal or state funding sources to support integration opportunities. Typically, magnets, we provide transportation in those locations. And so, as we centralize magnets, again, we're reducing costs, which allows us to shift our funding and integration, for example, from $4.6 million for transportation to $1 million in transportation. And you take those resources, you put them back in the classroom. And so, that's what a centralized model can do. Our current state, we do have K-5, 6, 8 magnets. What you're going to see in Models Two through Five, we will no longer have an open magnet, an urban environmental magnet, which is the second box, a PYP, early years PYP, although we still remain committed to our middle school and high school IB programs. You see the immersion programming will, depending on the model, changes, and then Montessori, we'll have one less Montessori. So the changes are highlighted in yellow. And so, in Model Two, this is a Spanish bilingual strand, looking, we'll have a STEM program at Hall, K-5. Sullivan will have a K-5 under Model Two. As a reminder, Hall is currently a PYP, and so then that shifts to a STEM. Our arts will be Bethune, K-5, they currently have a really exciting turnaround arts program in which Sarah, Jessica Parker had a chance to visit there, and so that was a great experience for students. I thought it was interesting. Marcy, K-5, it goes from a K to a K-5. Franklin becomes a STEAM program. Anderson becomes a 6A STEAM program. That'll be a strand program, so half the seats will be for STEAM, right? Which allow, our hope is some exciting partnerships with, for example, the hospital Abbott across the street. And then also, but then we still need to have middle school community seats, and so half that program will be for community seats. Our immersion dual-language opportunity, Sheridan, K-5, Emerson, K-5, Jefferson will be a 6A full immersion. That's an exciting opportunity for us. There are very few full school immersion at the middle school level. Will be one of the only locations in the state that provides those opportunities for our students. That is a potential draw from students outside the district. I've been informed by those very knowledgeable about immersion programming. And then, Montessori, Seward will be a K-5. Model Three? So Model Two, just as a reminder, what we want you to see in this map is, if you'll take a look at the map, you see that the current distribution of maps, just visually, what that centralized magnet programming looked like. And so, our current magnets are dispersed, you see significant magnets in the south portion of our city. And so, what this will do is it'll centralize our magnets. And within the appendix, you'll also be able to see, we have some maps on racial distribution of our populations. As a reminder, we are one of the most racially segregated cities in the United States by race as well as income. So by centralizing the magnets, we're able to give people equal opportunities to participate in the magnet programming. Again, we don't want a zip code to define necessarily your opportunity to participate in some innovative, exciting program. So Model Three, again in yellow, you'll see the change here primarily is that we've added green as a K-5. So, we have Sheridan, Emerson, Jefferson, and now we've added green. Okay, and then again, green becomes Model Three, so a little dot, or is green there? I don't have my pointer, but you just see the dot on Model Three, I think it's the red dot, a little more southern in the city. Okay, Model Four, you know, you have the addition, Sullivan goes from a K-5 to a K-8, so for Model Three. And Seward now is a K-8, so those are the changes. And then, you see the map? And then, Model Five, green, again, you have the K-5, and then you have the mix of the K-8s. So we just wanted to, these are the models that we presented last night, we'll continue to engage upon. There's obviously pros and cons in the different models. But Model Five has the two magnets, the K-5 Spanish immersion. Again, you can see the map located. Wanted to spend a bit of time, not to go too in-depth, because I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to present, but our middle school feeder sites, Models Two and Four would be to your left, folks in the audience and members of the board who want to take a look. Models Three and Five are to the right. If you look in the purple area, Green Central on Models Two and Four is modeled, and I'll talk about what that means. Models Three and Five, green is a magnet, so it's not visible on the map. And so, if you look at the legend, there's different colors. Present for Anderson, you know, the elementary's feeding to Anderson are located in the gold. Anthony would be in the lime, by green. And Watten, red, Justice Page, purple. Northeast would be your orange color, and Olson, blue, I think the turquoise, and then Sanford would be blue. And so, you see, for example, the different pathways. So let's look at the purple in the middle. So Models Two through Four with green as a magnet, or green as a community school, Barton, Lindell, green, Hellfield Burrows would then feed into Justice Page. Okay, and so, I think that the feeders are fairly self-explanatory. And then again, as you look at the map next to it, green's no longer there, so green is a magnet school. High school feeder sites, the superintendent mentioned that we are in the early stages of modeling. We are anticipating, as we're engaging, that we'll have a number of community conversations. What's very interesting about, in both models, I mean, the middle school feeders and high school feeders, is that you, as we model different boundaries and feeder sites, one of the things that, the reason why you engage is that each community has a historical context. Okay, so as we're engaging with families and they're saying, well, do you know the impact of that railroad track? Right? Or do you know the impact of the lake and how that separates communities? Or within a community, there's a low-income apartment complex. And so, when you've made your decision, you've split communities by income. That's the engagement process that we'll be doing. These are the high school feeder sites. And you see, for example, by looking at the orange, northeast, so looking at northeast, northeast will feed into Edison, and so these are very self-explanatory, Sanford to Roosevelt, Justice Page to Washburn, purple, and the green, Anthony to Southwest, and Watten to north, and then you have obviously Olson to Henry. There is, if you look at the red dot and the blue, this is one of the challenges that we're having as we're modeling some of these high school sites, and this is in the infancy stage, is that, if you go to the previous slide, for example, Mung International Academy is, so Mung International Academy, there's a commitment to Mung language and culture. And so, there are language programs in Olson, and then there's a strong program in Henry. So, decisions that we make are how do you honor that cultural context, the commitment to culture and language, and so we continue to the pathway there. Is fully expected that some of these boundary lines may change as we do engagement, and as we're modeling enrollment capacity, et cetera. Okay, to some, pros and cons of the five models, I'll go just quickly. Model One, you see that our current state, we have 20 racially identifiable schools, and we have 13 schools above 80% freebies lunch. Model Two, you see a reduction from 20 to eight, and then from 13 to five in terms of the number of schools that are 80% poverty. Model Three, as you're adding the third immersion site, one of the things that happens is that one of the schools next to green, so Lindell, and it'll be in the data, has the potential of becoming a racially identifiable site. Okay, and so as you're looking at them, I mean, there's give and takes there. So then, if you go with a Model Three, then you're having to address the challenges of Lindell, that may lead to, again, a boundary, you know, change there. Also, what's interesting in Model Three, though, is that one of the neighboring schools, Barton, has 326 students modeled, and I think in Model Two, they'll go up to 600. Okay, so, you know, there's implications for each of these models. Model Four, the strand bilingual, eight, and then Five, 80% poverty. And Model Five, you see the numbers nine and six. So regardless of what model we choose, in terms of Models Two through Five, we will have a significant impact on a number of racially identifiable schools, will also have a significant impact on the schools that are 80% or more freebies lunch. Just in terms of sustainability, as mentioned, Model One, our current structure may mean a closing a significant number of schools because of enrollment and other factors. We may do some resource shifting, allocation shifting, we may see larger walk zones. Model Two, which is the community schools and the bilingual programming, if you're moving to a centralized magnets and you're realizing savings there from centralizing magnets and going to community schools, you're making a decision in Model Two to take some of those savings, in this case up to $3 million, and then using it for your strand programming. Okay, so that may not be the most cost-effective model. Model Three, adding the third immersion site, it has greatest potential for savings, it also, but what it means as you're adding an additional magnet school, there's less resources for magnet schools, right, as a function of adding an additional magnet school. You're also wanting to make sure that you're not, as you're adding the third magnet school, creating another racially identifiable site. Model Four, Strand Bilingual Programming and Addition of Limited K-8 Magnets, you're again having the additional cost of the strand programming, you're also adding K-8s. We'll have a conversation tonight about the extent to which your K-8 can provide a well-rounded education. And so, if that is the case, if you go to a K-8 model, there may be some additional expenses to provide those K-8 students the same opportunity that a student in a 6A program. Model Five, again, K-5 immersion, limited K-8s. So you're looking at a reduction in dollars available for magnet schools because you're adding another magnet. You're also wanting to control for potential racially identifiable sites, and then looking at the well-rounded conversations with K-8 6A. So those are the models. And just a reminder, I won't go into this in depth, but obviously, there's benefits to integration, I think some folks have asked for this. There is an annotated big biography that will be made available. If folks want to see the research behind this, we have that completed. There's also a really nice study by the Century Foundation, April 2019, that also details the benefits of education, benefits of integration. Obviously, they're significant, academics, cognitive, right, civic, social-emotional benefits. We know that students who go to schools and integrate it, learning opportunities are more likely to have friends, for example, of a different race, be more committed to urban environments, more committed to social justice, critical thinking, because you're bringing students together from different experiences, et cetera. So, this is, there is a significant benefit, and this represents frankly, over four to five decades of research. So unquestionable, there is a significant benefit for integrated learning opportunities. And here, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Devett to talk about walk zones.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So you're going to see in this presentation, both in the body of the presentation and in the appendix, the individual school boundary maps with walk zones. So as we looked at modeling walk zones since we presented the magnet model in December, we were doing that in a response to some concerns we've heard from parents about safety. As we know, that's one of the reasons in our exit survey that families have told us they've left the district. So if we can increase the sense of safety by having smaller areas for kids to walk before they get a bus, the newly modeled walk zones considered violent crime occurrences. So using public data available on the city's website, we mapped violent crime. We currently use traffic to identify walk zone issues and other road barriers, if you would, like railroad tracks, for our elementary students. But looking actually at crime statistics within a walk zone, this is the first time that, in my experience, we've done this here in the district. So we looked, as I said, areas of higher crime, based on a higher-than-average incident of those violent crimes as compared to the city. So just want to take a second to walk through these maps, I think they might be a little bit more complicated than some of the previous ones. So this is a sample for Jenny Lind. The red line shows the modeled boundary that came out of the community school and the magnet studies in November and December. The dotted line there that you see surrounding the green area, the dotted line itself is the current walk zone for Jenny Lind. So if you live within that dotted line, you're expected to walk to school. If you live outside of that dotted line, then you're receiving transportation. The green shaded area is how we have modeled the reduced walk zone based on the information that I shared previously. So just one note as a reminder, and I know the board has heard this before, but just for others listening, we first started in the community school study in setting boundaries, we based those off the city's neighborhood designations. And then, keeping in mind our two goals of integration, those boundaries were modified from the city neighborhood boundaries in an attempt to improve our overall integration of our individual schools. What we didn't do in that work was balance enrollment then between those schools. So we're certainly receiving feedback and input about some of the boundaries now that these have been published, and we're taking all of that feedback and taking a look at, would shifting the boundaries as requested or suggested have an impact to our project goals? Or is it a specific impact to that individual school and balancing enrollment? So that'll be some of what we consider as we look at any further tweaks to boundaries. If it negatively impacts our integration, I think we'll have to take a closer look at whether or not that supports the study. The other thing I'd like to point out on the map is the demographics that you see there in the white box are prior to us populating magnets. So just know that those things will shift as we look to populate through placement protocols and project what we believe our magnet enrollment to be in this study. Then we just included a couple other examples, and then again, the remainder of these maps, and as Superintendent Graff mentioned, will be available on our website. They're already out there in the board book as part of the appendix to this presentation, but we will also make it somewhat easier to find in putting that on our CDD page. So another example of Falwell, the thing that might be somewhat confusing on this one is you actually see a couple other schools popping in, and that's just based on, you know, the scale that we used. What we were attempting to do is make sure that individual families and students could look at their specific street address and see how that's impacted by these boundaries. So in some cases, this is new information. So in this case, you're just looking at Falwell at the bottom of the screen, and for the purposes of this particular map, we're not trying to represent Seward or Bancroft. And then, here's an example of a walk zone that doesn't change, based on that additional data review of crime in the city of Minneapolis. So, Board Directors, if you have any clarifying questions, Director Felder?
Thank you. I have to say that I wasn't very excited when I saw what I was given to look at, the five models. And in a conversation with someone, the words that I used to describe it were racist and classist. And some of the pieces that I want to point out is that when we, I'm going to walk backwards. Well, I want to first talk about the integration budget. The integration budget has never, as I've been watching at it...
Excuse me, Director Felder, is this a clarifying question, just to get a better understanding of what we've seen? And we're not going in, we're going to save those questions for the end?
Okay, but sometimes I just have to say something, because you know what? For one, my land is being taken away from me, my walkways for Northside students, Franklin doesn't even have any feeder schools, it's not even on the middle school feeder page. I have a lot... I have a lot, I have the second-largest group gathering of Spanish-speaking people, and you're talking about putting a third site at Green Central. These are the things that I'm talking about. So as I go forward, I'm just going to let some out now, because what I don't want it to do is bottle up at the end. That's not what we want to see. So, but what I really need is for us to really come together to have an inclusive model that shows respect to these students from North Minneapolis that feed, 2,400 students feed into other schools that aren't in the area. And so I'm hoping that this isn't the last of the models that I'm going to see, because it is disrespectful. And when we started the lawsuit, it was because Black and Brown children didn't have the same opportunities, and I'm not seeing this happen here. So how do we fix this going forward? Why don't we even have Franklin as a middle school, becoming a middle school feeder? I mean, what is going on?
Thank you, thank you for the clarifying question. Franklin Middle School has been modeled as a magnet, and so as a magnet, there is no community school that is supporting it. You'll see that in a couple of other schools that are turning into magnets. They do not, they do not have a community school attendance area. It's modeled as a citywide magnet, so they actually will be receiving transportation support throughout the city so students can access it from all parts of Minneapolis.
Superintendent, and honestly, I see the game that's being played, and I don't like it. Like, it can be a magnet, and it can have its own area, attendance area. I mean, just point blank. I don't want to play this game, and I don't want to play it with fair. I don't want, I don't want to do that to my students in my community.
The strand bilingual, two-way community school, can you tell me some of the disadvantages? I mean, you mentioned, you didn't really actually go into depth about what the disadvantages are of a strand program. And then, also with that, you didn't mention this, and it might be an Ibrhima question, I don't know. As far as funding is concerned, because it's a community school, and correct me if I'm wrong, would there be, would there be a need for some outside funding to support the strand program? So you would be receiving funding from the district, obviously, but would there be a need for extra funding from another that may not be sustainable? So I'll stop there, let you answer.
Director Frinney, so I'll just start with the funding and turn it over to Dr. Fearing about the pros and cons. But essentially, a strand program, because you're adding additional staff, it's estimated that'll be about $1 million per strand program. And so whatever savings, to your point, whatever savings you would recognize, dollars from a centralized magnet community school model, you would use some of those dollars to pay for the strand programming. So that would be a fund one, it would be a fund one expense. So that is a very expensive model. Dr. Fearing, would you like to talk about the pros and cons of the different models?
Okay, good, it works. Just checking. So currently, right now, we have full school immersion sites, like Emerson and Wyndham. We also have strand programming, so this would be like at Jefferson or Anderson. The difference is that right now, at those schools, they're one-way, meaning that if your first language is Spanish, if you're an English learner, perhaps, you are directed or placed or guided into those strand programmings. What happens is that then you're pretty much segregated, not only by language, but also by race, and then you have benefit-eligible that fits into that, et cetera. So regardless of the CDD, we wanted to be able to offer the two-way model. So whether it's a two-way in a full school immersion or a two-way within a strand. So the difference in the two-way is that you would have native English counterparts. So they would be learning Spanish, native Spanish speakers would be learning English, and they would have that integrated opportunity. So the difference in the models that Mr. Moore was talking about is that in the full school, now, the whole school is balanced that way. And the ideal would be a 50/50 split, but we know with student movement, et cetera, you might get a 70/30, but you wouldn't want to get beyond that, 70 of one language and 30 of another. In the strand, in the community schools, we would identify which community schools has a larger population of native Spanish speakers. And then we would have, within that community school, so they would still have their regular community school students, but within that school, then we'd put a two-way program as a strand. So the students who live in that community, who want to engage in dual-language learning, would then be able to be a part of that strand program within a community school. But you can see how that would cost more, because you have kind of two paths going in the same school than if you just had a full school as immersion. So we think about some of the costs associated, if you're going to have native Spanish-speaking families within a school, you want to make sure that you have a support staff that speaks the language, you want to make sure that you have office staff, you want to make sure that you have other staff in the school that are able to greet and work with the parents whose first language is Spanish. That's what adds the cost to that community school, is just a strand program.
So I'll just use the term, I'm speaking of the strand programs and the disadvantages and the advantages. When, I'm just going to call it a school within a school model, because that's what it's been referred to. The experiences that students have that are in these different programs, what classes are they actually, where they're interacting with one another? Is it just like gym, or, you know, some of maybe their core classes, maybe a math class? And what has been the experience, and maybe you might be able to speak to this, in the past, with some of the connections that students are making with one another, and also with the teachers that are in these separate programs? Like, how do they, do they collaborate with one another so that students are having a more of a, more of an experience with one another? So we're not necessarily having that school, we're having a school within a school, but kids are not, not having experiences with one another? Because that's been my history with some of the strand programs that I've seen in my past, so it's about being intentional and authentic. So could you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that would be one of the main objectives, if you had a dual, two-way strand within a community school, that you'd be able to nurture and engage that. I would say currently, right now, that has been the struggle with some of our strand programming with our one-ways, is how do you create a schedule? How do you create a community within your school that keeps, as a whole school, but yet, there's still students who are engaging, you know, in their core, language arts, math, et cetera, in one language, and then the other side of the school, they're engaging in English. And so I think one of the things when we're considering if we do move forward with the strand programs is really working with those schools and how to create more integrated opportunities. But we have to remember that ideally, in a strand program, you would be self-sustaining, meaning that because it'd be two-way, you would have English speakers and native Spanish speakers in that classroom. You know, you might have two kindergarten classrooms that look that way, and then you'd have two kindergarten classrooms that are English-only, right? So the engagement really is within that two-way program. Now, it doesn't mean that they wouldn't be out at recess at the same time, or eating lunch together, obviously, right? But I think that the piece, the difference then between a full school immersion is that you don't have these, like, two different tracks going at the same time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Director Walzer?
Thank you, Chair Ellison. With respect to the immersion, looking at the numbers here, it appears that there would be less aggregate immersion available than current, what we currently have available, and importantly, than the demand in our city and the demand in surrounding districts. Minnetoka, for example, chose to increase their immersion offerings because that was attracting people into the district. So it seems to me that to essentially reduce the provision for immersion is counterproductive.
So Director Walzer, thank you for that question. That's part of the reason why you see us adding bilingual opportunities in our models, additional bilingual opportunities in our 3, 4, and 5. We currently have 1,160 student seats in the two-way and 500 in the one-way, based on the data when we started this modeling, for a total of 1,660 in immersion seats. And the three-immersion model, if we use green as an example, with its current capacity, would give us 1,733 seats. So the three-immersion model actually provides additional seats for the immersion programs, based on current enrollment.
Yeah, and to add, I mean, you're also seeing additional seats because of the full school immersion at Jefferson. So, and Walton is currently a strand program. So under this model, you're actually giving more opportunities for students to go from a K5 experience and then articulate to a 68. So that is actually a value added by adding full school immersion at Jefferson.
Another aspect of this that is confusing to me is the fact that the, a substantial portion of our native Spanish-speaking community is in the central corridor, as I'm sure you know from your models, and yet, the programming is not located in a manner that's accessible to them.
Director Walzer, I think if you take a look at the maps in the appendix, in fact, centralizing the magnets does make programming accessible for families, particularly in the Anderson area, the green, the green area, you have the green magnet. There are Spanish-speaking families in the Northeast area, as well as north, and so, in fact, we're actually making, you know, as we build stronger programming, I think we're going to provide more equitable opportunities for students throughout the district. But, you know, in looking at the seats, we're very aware of where the populations live. We're very aware of the opportunities for students, so we believe that. We are providing an adequate number of seats.
To what extent does your modeling take into account the attrition that's going to occur when changes on this scale are made?
Director Walzer, I mean, I think that that's an unknown. I mean, I think that one could also argue that we are going to reduce the number of families, because that will no longer attend the district. And we believe that if we focus on the families, so again, we have 1,200 families that are currently leaving the district. 800 of those families, or 80% of those families are families of color. Those families have clearly articulated that they're leaving because of safety, because of academic excellence. And so, and we believe that we can do a better job retaining those families. But I think certainly that those are, we believe, with strong academic programming, with centralized magnets, magnets that are innovative. I mean, one of the things that we'll be able to do with this model is we'll actually be able to invest in our magnet programming. So, I mean, keep it in mind, currently, we spend about $800,000 on our magnet programs. Our 14 magnet programs receive about $800,000. Under centralized magnets, and as you have, create more demand, you can actually have more innovative programming. So imagine now those nine programmings having a budget perhaps of $3 million. Now you're having exciting, innovative programming, and you're taking the innovation from those magnet programmings, using that to guide and improve the academics of your community schools as well. So I think it's a significant assumption that you're going to have a mass exodus from the district as a result of this work.
With respect to the location of the schools?
So, thank you. We have other people who want to have questions, some clarifying questions right now? We've got other, we've got a couple of other breaks for questions, too, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Director Jordane?
Still want to speak?
Okay, well then, we're just going to do once around this first time, so.
Director, anybody else?
So just to be clear, we have clarifying questions, and then we have regular questions. Okay. Then mine are regular questions.
Okay, got it, thank you. All right, we could move on.
Thank you. So we'll continue to the next part of the presentation, talking about the academic programmings and considerations. Dr. Fearing, I think it's yours.
Well, hello again. I get the exciting conversation of K8 68s. I know that's been weighing on the minds of you as board directors, as well as our communities, so I want to do justice and diligence to some of the thought processes that we had as we were modeling out. I think one thing that is important to highlight is that when we first were looking at K8s and 68s, going back to the board resolution, I looked at really two significant things that have been occurring across the board, whether it's 68 or K8s, and it's our achievement gap. It's also our ability to provide a well-rounded education. So whether you look at a K8, and again, it doesn't matter which side of the city, it doesn't matter what kind of programming they have, and then you look at our 68s, our regular, there's still a very, very disparate achievement gap between our students of color and our white students. And I would even say, with even our magnets, we see the same thing, right? So foundationally, it's not necessarily about structure. Foundationally, there's something else that we need to be doing better at. Because if we had a shining star of one model of school that is producing great outcomes for all kids, that would be our magic bullet. But we have not found that yet. So two, the two things that I was really looking at when I was looking at the difference between K8 68s, is one, it's comparing apples to oranges when we compare the way we have our 68s and our K8s. Some of our K8s are through magnet, through lottery. So again, you heard through the EDIA, the impact of choice, the power and privilege a choice plays, and so who gets in and who doesn't. Some of our K8s, even within the same K8 school, students are placed because that's our community school. So the families not, have not actually opted into that school. So now, when you look at the, what we offer in that school, we have to be very, we have to look at it very closely in terms of, are we providing a well-rounded education even to the families that didn't opt into that school? Right? So those are some of the things that I was looking at when we were modeling out the K8 68. Now, again, through, I'm sure you've gotten many emails as well, and myself, with various research, you can find research on both ends. You know, being as someone who has gotten a graduate degree, I mean, it's one thing that I found out very early, it's depending on what you look for, you can find that research, right? But I want us to bring back to what we're trying to solve here in Minneapolis Public Schools, and in the department that I represent, its academic outcomes. So that is what I want to comment a little bit on. So if you go to, yes, thank you, that's the slide. If student demographics are main reason for academic performances of two school types, then converting middle schools into K8s may not lead to significant improvement in student achievement. The student population remains unchanged. So again, as we're looking at the CDD, and we're looking at how do we go down to the very bottom and restructure and rebuild, it's going to be less about the grade configuration, and it's going to be less about the structure of the actual school. It's going to be about how are we doing with our teaching and learning with our students? Because we have students, again, who are doing very well in our K8s, our white students. We have students that are doing very well in our 68s, our white students. We have students who are not doing very well in our K8s, students of color. We have students who are not doing very well in our 68s, our students of color, right? So again, my job is to look at it from a very specific lens of looking at academic outcomes. So I just wanted to open a little bit with that, so you knew where I was coming from. One of the things that I mentioned yesterday at Northeast, and I don't know how many of you were there, I got a little fired up with academics, and a little fired up about what makes a great school. And I apologize, you don't have the same slide that they had at Northeast. But I went through, and I asked this question of the audience, and I'll read to you the bullet points, and again, I apologize, you don't have them, but I want you to think if this short list somewhat defines a great school, in your opinion, and audience as well. So access to rigorous instruction without traveling to another area of the city. Can I get that where I live? Access to highly-trained teachers, specifically in literacy and math. Access to curriculum that represents our students and builds on their cultural assets. Where I live, the culture, the language that we speak in our community, does my school represent that, so I don't have to leave half of myself at the door to get a great education? Increased intervention acceleration opportunities. We have some schools that have been asked to continue to layer on intervention after intervention intervention, because the core is not strong. We have some schools that have limited opportunity for acceleration for their advanced learners, because they don't have the funding mechanisms to do so. Access to a well-rounded education, does that make a great school? Access to social-emotional learning, equitably incorporating culture and values of the community and neighborhood. and neighborhood. Does that short list in some way, shape, or form describe great schools? Right? Then I ask the audience to think forward, are all of our students, or I'm sorry, are all of our schools in Minneapolis providing this? And if not, then it's up to us to change that, because every student in Minneapolis deserves to have what's on that short list. And it's up to us. And every student deserves to have this and not be asked to travel to a different school, whether it's within Minneapolis Public Schools or whether it's across our boundaries. So we do that systematically to ourselves if we cannot carry through on some of the promises that we should be in public education. So that led me then to talking about, well, how are community schools going to help this? One of the things that I think is very important in a community school is that that school is the pillar of its community, right? I think about the schools by where I live, and you know, you can see the kindergarteners wearing the mascot of their pathway at high school, right? You see it at the grocery store, you see it at the local restaurants, you see it no matter where you go. There is this pride in that school, and people will double down for that school, right? You attack the school, you attack the neighborhood, you attack the community. And when a school has it, then they have, they are empowered, they're able to get the resources that they need because they have the, the belief of the neighborhood in order to do so. And I think that's an important piece that we're missing in some of our Minneapolis Public Schools. Some of our schools, I would say, have that, as represented by the CDD, right? Which parents are we hearing from? Because that's their school, that's what they will live and die for. But we have some schools that do not have that privilege to have that, because we have systematically created structures that do not empower those students to stay within their community, right? Another thing that I would say that our, having a community school approach will allow is for us as educators, and I want to include that as myself, but also our building leaders, our teachers, our support staff, anyone who works in the school or supports the schools, to most intimately understand the community and neighborhood for which we serve. Now, if I'm not from that neighborhood, that's okay. But it allows me the opportunity to learn what that's all about. It allows me to learn and have access to community leaders, to elders, to the people who understand the historical narrative, who understands the trauma that may have occurred on that ground, right? It gives me, as an educator, an opportunity to learn more about the students that I'm serving. And right now, I would say, the way that our schools are set up, the opportunities that we are providing for professional development, for these opportunities just are not happening. And I think that has a direct impact on academic outcomes. That if our students cannot feel like their schools represent them, how do we expect them to show up to class and feel fully engaged? How are we expecting them to understand social studies from a social justice lens if they feel traumatized every time they walk into the classroom or into the school, into the cafeteria, into the hallway? And that again is on us. So I think having the community, now I'm getting all passionate again, but having, having the community schools and having the CDD allows us to reallocate resources. It helps us to have a better, more aligned vision to how our schools should be successful. And it may look differently depending on where they're at, and that's okay, because we are all different. Our sides of the city are different. But our schools should then represent the students that we serve. Um, I have to check which slide I'm on. So with SCL, definitely. So when we're looking at the adolescent phase of our students, right? And I think this has been one of the things that I've received a lot of feedback on, the K-8s provide a much more supportive environment, especially if you have siblings in the same school. So I've read those emails, I've looked at them. Can our 6'8s do that as well? Absolutely, right? I think that it takes a little bit more work, definitely, when you're looking at the structure of the school and what to place in the school. But I think that there's pieces that our adolescents need, and I'm sure I'll get more emails after this, but I think that there are pieces that our adolescents need once they move from fifth grade to sixth grade, that middle schools can really embrace and work on that's atypical from what a K-5 student needs. And maybe I'm thinking more from my personal experience, because I have a newly sixth grader, and he moved from a K-5 school, and now he's in a 6'8 school. And to watch his trajectory of just learning about himself and learning about the world, understanding how to be in class on time, you know, those different things. And I wonder what his experience would be in a K-8. It could be similar, but, but what I see in terms of how we can work with our grades six through eight and empower them in young adolescents moving into, into the high school age, we have a great opportunity through our 6'8s. This is the one piece that I think stood out to me the most in terms of a well-rounded education. And as I was going through this, I was working with Associate Ray, so he's over our middle level, middle schools. And you know, as part of the academic plan, we're working on building up our middle level framework so that we do, again, regardless of the CDD, we do better with our grades six through eight. And one of the things that we were looking at is the opportunity for students to have enrichment, to have nurturing courses that are not just the standard core, but that expand and, like, really expand the mind and the brain. It's developing at such a rapid rate. They say the brain in the transition years are developing just as much as when they were a baby moving into, out of infant stage. And so we have to be able to nurture that. And one thing that I heard when I was at a conference a while ago is that in the grades six through eight age, and you know, it might shift a little bit depending on who you are, but in that age, there's double impact. So I want you to think about that in terms of double impact, that if something is nurturing and great and supporting, there's double the positive impact in building that identity and building their self-sufficiency. However, if in grades six through eight, the opposite occurs, if there's more trauma, if there's more hurt, that has a double negative effect. And so I think that one of the things that we're thinking about when we're looking at the well-rounded education is we want to be able to expand and be able to provide a lot of these variety of opportunities for students, because this is where they're going to be able to, their brain is developing, and they're learning how to make good choices and understanding what is really, what makes them tick, what's their identity. When we did just a rough estimate, so it's a rough estimate, but looking at if we were to take the cost of all the programming that we have in our 6'8s and move them to our non-6'8, it's a price tag of $6 million. So again, that kind of shows you the disparity between the activities, the courses, the offerings that we have within our 6'8s as compared to our K-8s. I want to just give you a very quick snapshot. And again, I know that we have people in our community who are saying, oh, I know some schools offer more of this and less of this. And again, that might be true, but this was a snapshot of quarter one, right? And this was based on what, how schools had entered in their courses into our system. So just, this just gives you a, kind of a high-level view of some of the things that I saw when I was looking at the well-rounded education between our K-8s and our 6'8s. So again, world language, I know many of you up here, as well as myself, value the opportunity for a world language, and maybe not just in one, but to be able to kind of pick and choose during the 6'8, the middle years. You can see the difference between that. You can see the difference between music, the offerings in music. And then I'll just kind of, we'll just flash through these because you've seen these already. You can go back maybe one. So at the time that we pulled the data for quarter one, we had a school that was not able to offer world language, K-8, or music. Now, it doesn't mean they might, they might have had after-school activities or something like that, or maybe something later in the year, but at the time of the snapshot, that's what we were able to capture. I've touched on the community schools. Maybe I got ahead of myself, and that would not be the first time. And so you've had a chance to see this, see this in advanced. So this is again what I was referring to in having the community input, the community guidance within our schools and the strength of that. You can fast forward to the next one. And this, and it's very small, but you have it in here. A pack, it just lays out again the value add of having community schools based on what we're already planning to do. And this actually gives a nice visual of the value add of our magnets, because I know that was a question as well, or maybe a question. So one of the things that we are moving forward is having a STEM for all through the K-5 experience. So you can see in a community school, you'd have the opportunity to be introduced and to participate. But a STEM magnet then would be able to embrace that value add and bring in a lot more opportunities for students to focus more through the lens of STEM on interdisciplinary and project-based learning. Here's another, this is more of a comprehensive list, and again, these are ideas, these are possibilities, but it gives you a good idea of, you know, if parents and students choose this magnet, the value add, the additional opportunities they get by choosing this. And again, the important piece again is that this would be through integration, so there'd be diversity, so you're not just learning STEM and STEAM through the interdisciplinary, but you're also learning it through an integrated cultural approach as well because of the makeup of the school. Arts, the same, I think this is really exciting, especially City of Minneapolis really known for its arts. And so by being able to provide an art magnet, we can really capitalize on our local artists, as well as some of our more formal art experiences that we have, whether it's through theater or music. But we wanted to be able to highlight and leverage an opportunity that we have here in the city of Minneapolis, and again, through a very integrated approach. Onto career and tech ed. So again, I'm, again, from the equity standpoint, how has current CTE programming at various schools created or decreased opportunities for all students? What is the value add to a school that hosts a CTE program? And so these are some of the questions that we were using as we were, that was guiding our work when we were creating the CTE proposed model. And along the line of having centrally, sorry, citywide access to magnets, CTE would be the same way. It should be a citywide program. All the students in Minneapolis Public Schools should be able to access them. The CTE is funded, as you know, through the Perkins Grants. We apply as a school district, and so therefore the programming that we have needs to be accessible to all students. As you may know, I just referenced the Perkins Five. We're writing the application for Perkins Five, we're currently in Perkins Four. And so a lot of the input that we had in doing this proposed model was actually part of the work we needed to do for the, the application for Perkins Five. So that involves stakeholder input in and out of, inside and outside of our organization, so included employers, workforce needs, but also with parents and students, et cetera. If you can move to the next slide, I think it's a little bit easier to see. There you go. So here is the, the much anticipated CTE proposed model. So again, we have various CTE programming at different high schools. Now, how it got placed is a whole nother story. How got, how, what, or which school got what programming? But what we wanted to do is to be able to centralize them into locations that would make sense for all of our students to have access, as well as to stay within the restrictions that we have in terms of we don't have a never-ending supply of funds or facility space. And so taking into consideration those few things, this is the proposed model. So North High would host the North Tech Center. It would include engineering, computer science, robotics, web, and digital communications. And this is a step up from what, it's a step up from your regular robotics class where you open up a box and make a robot. I mean, this would be more state-of-the-art, students really building them, programming them, machine robotics, different aspects. The South Tech Center would include, at Roosevelt High School, which they already do have auto construction, they already have welding as well, so we'd have machine tools in addition. They would have healthcare, and then according to Perkins, we do need to bring in an agriculture piece to the career pathway, so they would host that. And then we do have a few that are unassigned. We still are trying to model out for space in terms of funding, money, where would be the best place, and also it has to fit the school as well. So do they want to host a citywide program and be able to meet the expectations as well? So that would be business, education, and then of course, a new one, law and public safety. And then on the next slide, you can see the movement, so where the, the program currently is, where it would go in terms of the proposed model. So again, it just takes you through that same list that I just read through. And then the last one is just alternative timeline of engaging with our communities. We think the CDD as it is is a lot to engage with, so we separated out the CT part. So we'll be at high schools and having conversations since it's primarily a high school topic. And questions? Clarifying questions?
Thank you. Director Inns.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. I, I just have a couple of, these are clarifications before I get into general questions, right? So, okay. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to clarify something which I think is sort of, this might be, come off kind of jerky as a jerky question, but it's not your contention, or maybe it is your contention, that because there's research on either side of this K-8 versus 6'8 argument, that neither side's research is therefore credible or relevant. So we just throw out both sides because there's arguments on either side? Is that what you're saying? Or, I just want to get your position on it, and, because I, I thought it was interesting, the stuff about the 6'8s almost being like a self-fulfilling prophecy because of the populations that usually end up in a 6'8, and the correlation in testing. So I just, you know, I thought, I hadn't seen that research before, even though I myself am a Johns Hopkins alumni. But, not that I think Johns Hopkins is all that great, to be honest with you, but, so I just, I'm, I'm not sure. I was a, I taught at a first through 12th grade school for a long time, and I believe there's value in the small communities, but in terms of the research, I, I'd be curious to know, you know, why we're moving forward if there's research on both sides and that negates either one. Because certainly, you know, I don't believe that both sides of every argument are equally valid, right? And that because you're looking for something, you're going to find research for, to support that, you know? I don't, I don't believe that, so.
No, that was not my contention to not regard the research for as it is, right? I think my point is that Minneapolis Public Schools, the way that we have structured our K-8s and our 6'8s is not necessarily how research is regarding them, right? So I think the article that you referenced, they even talked about a new K-8 and an old K-8, the traditional K-8, and the new ones that we have. And so when we're looking at the research to support, I think it's absolutely valid, and I think that's fine, that we use that. I just want to put forward that the way that we have structured, or the way that we have resourced, or the way that we have designed our 6'8s and our K-8s are not necessarily what the research is referring to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Because I know people are listening very carefully to what you say with regard to that stuff. And then the other question I had was the schools, so for instance, the course offering snapshots, that's, those are specific schools you're, you're referencing within the district, right? And they're not, we're not naming them for some reason, which I'm sure is, there's a good reason, which, you know, maybe you guys could tell me. But, you know, but, that, they are, you know, this is not like, oh, this school A, and we're going to present research to prove our point from fictional schools. We're not doing that.
No, we're not. Those are actually Minneapolis schools. But I, I think I didn't want to get distracted with, well, why does that school not have it? Or why does that school have so much? Because that's, that's not the purpose of this. It was to be able to clarify, instead of me sitting here and saying, oh, we don't have the same offerings for all schools, schools, it's to say, that is actually what's happening. Now again, I know that there are stories behind all of this. I know that some of the schools may not offer music during the day, but they have a robust after-school programming or something else going on, and, and that's fine. And I think my point was just to say, I didn't want to come out and say to all of you that the course offerings are not the same without being able to just give you an example.
Yeah. And so you know also there are people behind you shaking your heads that maybe don't believe some of our data, and so when we don't name the And so when we don't name the schools, they're going to say that, you know, maybe we're not accurate in our data, and now they're nodding their heads and stuff. So, so I just say to those folks, you know, I'm totally willing to listen to you and hear what you have to say, and I'm sure our staff is as well, if we've made some mistakes. So, but I appreciate that specific information because now we can have that conversation about those things. So, thank you.
If I can, if I can just add, I mean, I'll just give you a really wonky research, because this is of interest to me in terms of why research is mixed, oftentimes. So oftentimes on studies, you want to look at the assumptions behind the model, so there's assumptions. So in some cases, you get into what leads to a quality educational experience. You can look at a quality educational experience as defined by a test score. You can also look at a quality educational experience as a well-rounded education. And as we've embarked upon the conference design over 18 months ago, board values were around language. So as a school district, we value language. We offer opportunities for students to take language. The board values were around opportunities for music, art, band, choir. We believe that was a well-rounded education. The opportunity to take health, it was, you know, PE, right? These were values. And, and so when you look at the scheduling, what I was really stunned at is just the glaring disparities between the ability of students to take music, art, language, health. I mean, you have one school that's contracting out with an outside vendor for health because they don't have enough of an ability of staffing to offer something that a larger middle school can do. So there's, there's variation in experience, interventions. When I look at, at some levels of growth in our middle schools, right, they actually are able to provide interventions and supports. And so in our district, when you have 50% of populations two or more grade levels behind, those school, those students deserve to have opportunities to have interventions to get them at grade level. I mean, that is to me a fundamental, right, in terms of equity. So, so those are, I just wanted to point that out, that, I mean, we're having these conversations, and as I'm often reminded, I mean, it isn't just about the test score, but in terms of the quality experience, a well-rounded education, clearly when you're looking at scheduling offerings, and I'm a believer that electives' choice are often something that gets the marginalized students who are disengaged, that disengaged learner, oftentimes, the elective brings them back to the core content, the core areas that they're not successful in. So oftentimes, the more electives you have, the opportunity to offer avid, provides students the ability to get re-engaged in the, in the learning process in math literacy, social studies, science. So, but often, that's why research is mixed. And I would say in the study that's being referenced, you know, there's only a difference in about 7% between K8s and 68s. And so if you look at, you know, that's one or two, you know, 10th standard deviation. So, so again, you're not going to see wide variety, and oftentimes we hear things are statistically significant. Well, that's fine, but what does that really mean for the experience of the student? And so when you have a small difference like that, there really terribly is.
Well, I think that, you know, the other thing that we have to recognize is that, you know, we're not, I mean, I would take the example of the school where I worked, where folks would come and they wanted to have an opportunity to take French, right? And we only offered Spanish because we were a smaller school. And also, we didn't pay our teachers very well, being a charter school as well. So we did have small classes, but we still weren't able to offer a variety of foreign languages. We didn't have PE. There were other things that we didn't have. And we could just say, well, we don't offer that. So, you know, we had a big waiting list. It was a charter school that had a big waiting list, and people wanted to go there, right? So we could say, this is what we provide, and this is not what we provide, you know? We're a public school system. We're not one individual charter school that is providing something by virtue of a single charter. We're a system, and so the decisions we make for our individual schools impact our other schools, and we have to look at things as a system, as Director Arneson pointed out about a month ago, I think. So I think that's also part of the question that we have to consider as well. It's not about one in particular school. So, all right, thank you very much. That was, I got past clarification there a little bit.
Yeah, you a little bit. No, but thank you. We've got a number of people who want to speak. I'm going to start with folks who haven't spoken yet, not come back around. So I've got Director Jordan, and then Student Rep Janine.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. So I just wanted to go back, just to clarify in the snapshots, exactly how far in depth did you look at some of these offerings for some of these K8s? Just because I know like under, I'm trying to figure out what schools these are that are on here, because I know what Barton offers, and some of the stuff that they offer are not on here. Quite a few things are not on here. And I do know that some schools are K8s, and I'm always speaking from my experiences, that they rotate a lot of those classes out and in. You know, Lizzie took Holocaust Studies. Now, I don't know of any other school in the district that teaches Holocaust, but that's a rotating elective. And now she's got dance, which falls under another category, et cetera, and music, et cetera. So they rotate out. So to clarify though, I know that other schools, like the 68s, they have like a more structured, am I correct, and they have a more structured elective base and such? Because I know when Lizzie spent a year at Page, they offered Arabic, but the following year, for whatever reason, they did not offer that. So my, what I'm trying to say is, or ask is, you know, when we're comparing 68s to the K8s, especially the Uppers program, are we taking into consideration that the K8s, the Upper program, are actually utilizing their resources in terms of rotating out these classes? Now, personally, as a parent, I know that Lizzie and Max are not interested in a world language right now. They're more interested in theater, drama, open program that makes the challenges there, social, emotional awareness, learning, not so much language. I'm not saying language is not important. They will take a language when they get to Washburn, and that'll be in a couple of years. So I know I'm going off on a little bit of a thing, but just to clarify that, the 68s have more of a structured programming compared to the K8s that have, I would say, to my experience, a little bit more freedom in terms of rotating out their classes, adapting to their, either it's open programming or whatnots. I know I kind of muddled there, but I hope you kind of understand what I'm getting at there, Dr. Fearing.
Yeah, sorry, I had to wait for the green light to come on. Yeah, it's okay. So yeah, that's why it's a snapshot, right? So it was what was available, we just uploaded the course offerings. And again, like I had prefaced, you know, schools, a K8 might be offering it in a different way at a different time, after school, before school, and even doing what you're seeing as rotating. But, but I think that the snapshot was just to show the, the variety of offerings that you can get through the structured scheduling at a 68 in choice, and what you would get through a K-day experience. So it was really not trying to disparage any schools or how they schedule. It was really just backing up what I was about to say with the variety of course offerings. So thank you for that.
The K8, if you want to put that, and the, and the structure of a 68, so thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Director Ali.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you please go to Slide 5 of your presentation, Chief Moore? I say five, that's 25. Yeah, thank you very much. I, I just, this is, this is the sad reality of Minneapolis Public Schools, that the math proficiency of African-Americans is 18%, and Native Indians is 17%, whereas Hispanic is 26%. That is the, what we need to, where we need to start the conversation. Shall we keep the way it is now and continue to let down students of color? Or shall we make the difference? What I'm saying that, I'm not necessarily saying that the CDD is going to fix all these problems, or I support or I'm against it. But with your presentations, you all acknowledge that Minneapolis Public Schools is not meeting academic needs of students of color. I think that's what we all agreed. If anyone wants to dispute that, he or me raise their hands. That's a fact. So I think, as we are going to have these discussions, I know we can talk about individual schools, we can talk about individual group of students, but certainly, I think it's about the time that we, we have to make the difference. Unfortunately, our students are not getting the same, same quality of education. And I, I'm open to ideas. I'm here to make the difference. You know, it's really, I mean, it's, I don't want to ask to have the same conversation again next year. So, in a way, I'm pleased to hear you acknowledging that, particularly the Chiefs. But on that hand, also, it's a sad reality. And the community, and generally, and all of us, we are not really working together toward solving this problem. And it has been going for a long time, you know? It's too much politics out there. There are people who are supporting this. Let's, let's, let's have discussions. There are people who are against it, let's have honest discussion. While we are having a mindset of that, can we help these students of color to achieve the academic success that? And what I'm saying that, I want to also, the kids that are doing good, to continue to do good. It's not about letting down some kids, or in other words, white kids and just want to uplift the black. We want all the kids to, to do good, you know? And I think that's, that's where I'm coming from. And let's, let's, let's have this continued discussions. I want to hear more, more about you. I encourage the superintendent, Eric Graf, and his team to dig deep, to have more sessions. If you need to add more community listening sessions, please do so. You know, we want the communities to be on board, and particularly students, the families of color, and particularly the ELL community. I don't see many Somali families, Latino families, Native Indian families engaging and participating in this very, very important discussion. And, and it's our responsibility to reach out and make sure that they understand what is, we are trying to achieve, what we are looking for, you know? If the goal is just like for us to just to be, just like, you know, continue to see this painful, you know? Really, I'm not here to score points or, and I said many, many, many times, the reason I joined the board was, what can I contribute? It's not, for me, a step stone for another place, not going anywhere else. It's not really, I just meant to, to see what can I do here, you know? And I want also my fellow board members that, we have to, you know, keep that in open mind, and, and we want to genuinely listen to each other. We should not doubt each other, that each group is just letting down or have some other, I don't know, interest. So that's what I just like to make this comment. So, thank you.
Okay, so I hope you don't mind, but I want to go back to the course offering, the course offering slide. So I went to a 5 through 8 school, and we were a pretty average-sized school, about 500 kids. And we had two language offerings. We had Spanish, we had French, taught by the same teacher in the same classroom. So I'm just a little confused on how moving to the 6 through 8 would bring us to 10 language classes.
I think I can help you with that one. You went to Field, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually technically a K8 school. It's a partner with Hale, so Hale was the, did you go to Hale too?
Yeah, but we didn't have.
Hale's, Hale's K3 or K4, and then, and then Field is 58. So the two schools make one K8 school. It's not a, it's not in that like larger middle school model like Page. It doesn't compare to that, right? So that's not why, your enrollment numbers at, at Field were a lot smaller than, for instance, Page, or I think Anthony is probably one of the other examples on here, or the other bigger middle schools like Franklin, or is that, does that maybe make sense to you at all?
Yeah.
Would you differ?
I still think that 10 seems a little far-fetched to me. But yeah, but I mean, I think it's important. So I go into, I go into high school now, I'm a year or two behind in Spanish now, and that's like, I'm going to have to deal with that for the rest of my high school career. I'm going to have to either skip a Spanish class, or you know, double up practice over the summer. So that I, I just want to make sure that it's as accurate as possible.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. I just want to go back to, there's a mention of centralizing the dual immersions, Spanish-speaking schools. And again, I just really want to point out that South Minneapolis has the first large bunch, but then South, North Minneapolis has the second. And it's not even taken into consideration. And Nellie Johnson, which is already a one-way dual immersion, a one-way dual, a one-way immersion, is not even brought to consideration. Why would that be?
Director Felder, members of the board. I mean, I think one of the main considerations was, again, the concept of centralizing magnets. So in the case of a Nellie Stone, that would not be in a central location. So, so that would be one of the, the main reasons. No, no, I meant, is that a concept of centralizing magnets? Yeah, I'm very aware of where populations live, but the concept of centralizing magnets. Again, what we're attempting to do with centralizing magnets is we're trying to reduce transportation costs. We're trying to model for integration. If we're using our integration revenue, the goal of that revenue per MDE, if we're going to use dollars for magnet school programming, is to reduce the number of racially identifiable schools. To date, because we have dispersed magnets throughout the district, we have not been able to reduce the number of racially identifiable schools. And in fact, many of our, many of our magnets that are in racially identifiable, I mean, they're segregated, they're in segregated locations. And so we're not meeting the goals, the intent of the integration revenue. And again, we've been spending $4.6 million for our magnet school programming without being able to yield any results to the state. And so that is a funding source for our magnets. I mean, the purpose again is integration as defined as reducing the number of racially identifiable schools. So certainly, I mean, I think from a programmatic standpoint, I mean, is there a need to have programming in, in all areas of the city? The answer would be yes from an integration standpoint. You know, that would not meet the needs of integration.
We've still got, yeah, we've still got two more people to speak, and we're going to come back to question. We have another section. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, go ahead.
I just want to point out numbers because pieces that bring it down. So I just want to know if you're aware, and this is using the 2019 data that you had on the, on the website. So out of the 2,530 K through 5 that I have in North Minneapolis, not including Riverbend and Harrison, and then I have 760 middle students, and only, just rounding it up, roughly 1,500 high school students. I lose a lot in my middle students because we feed out 2,400 students. 800, over 800 students we feed out with the numbers here. And so what are we doing to look at making sure the pathways come back to the middle schools and the high schools where there's active space, and making sure that our pathways are productive for the students of North Minneapolis? And then also, I just want to point out that I have, I have three high schools, and Henry's not really being talked about because Henry's, they do really well. But they worked really hard, I mean, with Peanuts, building up love, sweat and tears for their engineering program. And to, to move that out of Henry, just because we want to have a centralized CTE, is not fair to the community. And to move that out of Henry, just because we want to have a centralized CTE, is not fair to the community that really made that happen. And then also, I'm looking at an email from November 19th, 2010, when we had to bring in 100 students into North, or else they were going to close the door and disperse the students elsewhere. And we were talking about knocking on the doors and talking to the parents and getting surveys door to doors and getting that done. And then I was looking at what we offered you in 2012 as North High Community Coalition, the plan that we wanted. And everything that we wanted is actually right here in front of me, right? In the CNT education model, even agriculture. We had agriculture in 2012, 2011, because we finalized it in 2012. But the thing is, is that we sat together, Superintendent and Chief Moore and Ms. Moore, and you said, what do you really want at North? And I said, the auto, the construction, the welding, and the healthcare. And then I went to computer or something. But the thing is, it's over South. Why would we have all these meetings about what we want, what our people, what my constituents want, what my students want? And then we put it over South again. Why, and I just don't understand. Can someone tell me?
Director Felder, I believe you and I have had this conversation about what we attempted to do with career technical education. And conceptually, centralizing it in one location would be ideal. And based on conversations about the feasibility of putting it in one location, in particular, my interest was doing this on the North side. Were not feasible. And so that was the first priority was to say, let's put this at, on the North side of Minneapolis Public Schools, having centralized location for career technical education. The dollar amount that was needed in order to make that happen with the infrastructure far exceeded any kind of possible plan for that to happen. So the alternative was to then take a look at where do we have existing practices of career technical education already built into an infrastructure? And where do we have the potential to move those programs to North High School? So that's what you see in this proposal. We took the existing infrastructure that is in place already at Roosevelt, and we left it there. And then we also actually added things to the North side with our CTE. So I've been very consistent in how I've approached that. I've been very consistent in what I've explained that I want to do. I do recognize that, you know, there are trade-offs that have to be made around this work. But that's where we are as of today.
We're running behind, so we're going to finish up this last section, and we'll come back to questioning for board members. So thank you.
Just quickly, I do want to point out what the community school model, that one of the things that this model does is it does explicitly increase the enrollment in North Minneapolis. So for example, a hall that has, that currently has 237 students, has a building capacity of 460. Hall now becomes a STEM magnet. Magnets typically, when they're well-funded, fill up to 95% capacity. What's different in this centralized model is we're actually, as a school district, placing our, many of our magnets in our racially identifiable locations. And so we're able to do a couple of things. We're able to bring the enrollment up in those locations. We're able to provide innovative programming, in this case, Hall, Bethune, Franklin is a STEAM. Franklin is filled, I mean, that building has the capacity of double than the number of students. So if you can imagine, if you look at the chart, Hall potentially in Bethune as STEM and arts programs feeding into a STEAM program. If you're able to have Franklin at fully 95% capacity, it has the potential to double the population in North Minneapolis by itself. So these magnets were done deliberately with an eye towards making sure that we're not asking certain communities to bear the brunt of part of the placement protocols. Under enrollment matters, when we talk about equity, when we talk about the achievement gap, we need to have our schools healthy. And we talk about North Minneapolis, because that prevents teacher churn. That prevents having least effective teachers in locations, with the least effective, least experienced teachers in locations, right? Because you're not always having to deal with high levels of mobility of your teachers. And so you have healthier schools. There's enough students in North Minneapolis for North High School to have over 1,000 students. We know this. I mean, Director Felder, we've had the conversation. So as we're taking a look at the comprehensive design, we're explicitly trying to support areas such as North Minneapolis that has a large number of students leaving the area northeast, right? And we have these equity conversations of having strong, you know, healthier schools with stable populations. And so that's what we believe a community school model will do. And in fact, again, look, reference in the achievement gap, family involvement matters. Family involvement matters. So you have a community school model, and this is what we're proposing. You're going to see families more engaged and holding the schools accountable. I had a conversation with a family, a Spanish-speaking family, and it breaks your heart when you talk to families and they talk about having to leave their own community to get a quality education. It breaks my heart. And so, you know, you can imagine families leaving their communities and going across the city under the perception they're going to get a better education. And the reality is, in many cases, they return back to their neighborhood because experiences have not been positively experienced based upon the color of their skin. So this is what the comprehensive design is really trying to do, is really honor the communities and the students within those communities, really trying to get at the idea of safety where you shouldn't be able to, you should be able to walk four blocks to your location. And it's because you don't want to walk to your location or hop on a bus and going to schools up the street. And so then, again, you're tearing apart concepts of community. In any cases, we talked about, you know, 10 to 12 buses on any given day going into a community. Right? And so those are realities. So there is intentionality in trying to fill up schools, have stronger enrollments, have Franklin, have a larger enrollment, have North have a larger enrollment, etc. So just wanted to say that.
Yeah. In the interest of time, I want to make sure we move into the next phase of the presentation. So just to clarify where we are. Special education, that's where we are.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, Superintendent Graff, and the rest of our board directors. I was sitting here reflecting as I was listening to my colleagues. This is my sixth year starting of leadership of the special education department. And it's a real pleasure to sit in front of you to talk about the foundation we've laid over the last five years, as well as where we are and where we're moving forward to. So kind of want to talk you through four different areas, how we align to the academic plan, talking about services in our community school, talking a little bit about school-based allocations, which is something we put in place three years ago, and then placement of citywide programming as it relates to the comprehensive design. It's very important to me as a special education department that we're aligning to the work of the academic department and their plan. So I just wanted to show briefly, I expect that everyone in the special education department aligns and is one of the groups that works towards the goal areas that Amy and her academic team are working on. And just to point out a few things that we're working on, you know, one of the things I've sat up here to talk to you about over the years is really thinking about equity and our over-identification of students, students of color being labeled EBD, and especially our black students. When I started, we were at a risk, a black student in Minneapolis Public Schools was at a risk of almost five times that of a white student to be labeled EBD or with an emotional behavior disorder. I'm happy to say that our data last year were under three times the risk ratio. Still not good, but it's better. We're making, we're making gains there. And actually, for our district and our staff, as far as labeling students, we've seen that dive even lower to almost a one-to-one, that there is no disproportionality. While we're still welcoming students into our district who have the label and we're programming for them, we still have a lot of work to do as we move through that. That work is our adults in our department, as well as our teachers, really working on equity work through their own journey of racial understanding of where they are. It's really looking at our evaluation process and making sure that we have equity in that and that we don't have bias. And we've done that through committee work with our community and our families, and really strengthening our pre-referral process to get to special education. And then finally, really looking at the recruitment and retention of our special education staff of color. This one is very near and dear to my heart. And maybe some of you, as you were coming in tonight, saw some people cleaning up from soup of special education, which is actually looking at our non-tenured teachers coming in and inviting them in for soup, to have conversation, to build small communities, and to make them not feel isolated in their schools. That's one of the ways that we're really looking at, at retainment. We're also looking at recruitment. We have an amazing group of special education assistants. And I think they're our number one group that we recruit from, yes, thank you for that, that we recruit for to be our special education teachers. We've worked with higher education in being able to provide them opportunities to go back to school while still maintaining their job in special education as a special education assistant. When they're out there, we go to class and we bring them food. We talk to them. We talk to them about what's happening in our district. Our special education staff, teachers and department staff are actually helping teach the courses so that they're really getting an education. And we're wanting them to pipeline right back to Minneapolis Public Schools as teachers. We also are concerned about the middle years. That's something we need to work on with our general education colleagues. No matter what we decide as a district, K8 or 6'8", our kids are going to have to transition. And when I think about our students receiving special education services, transitions are hard. So we are really gearing up and planning for how are we going to help our students and families as they're moving through transitions and to keep them engaged through those transitions. Those are times that we don't want to lose students out of Minneapolis Public Schools. We want to keep them there. Want to also point out that this year, we've been working with Dr. Ross Green on his collaborative proactive solutions and problem-solving process. Dr. Green has been with us for two days last week and really working with us on how to work on coming up with Plan Bs for students. So when students are in conflict with adults in our system, how do we listen to students with empathy? Listen to them. And the more we listen, the more culturally competent we're going to be and responsive to them. Then how do we, as adults, explain our side and our perspective in a very calm way? And then how do we come up with solutions together? We really feel like this model and working with 10 pilot site schools is going to really transform the way we're looking at our students solving problems and being heard in our schools. We also are working in early literacy and math, and our early childhood special education department is using a new assessments tool that looks at the whole child. So really making sure that when we talk about well-rounded education for middle school, we are also doing that in early childhood special education and early childhood education. So really looking at the whole child, building up those schools to get, those skills to get kids ready to be a learner in their kindergarten setting. Our teachers are also working very hard in their professional learning communities for interventions for both pre-literacy and pre-mass skills. We believe that we build a strong special education program on a strong core program in general education. So we are working very hard with our general education staff to help them understand what Tier Two and Tier Three interventions would look like. We do not want special education to be the only game in town in helping students. I don't want that. I want to have a proportionate number of special education population in our district so that I can provide really well-intentioned and well-researched and well-funded interventions for students. We're also collaborating with multilingual, as well as advanced learning, on what does collaborative teaching look like? So we can push in services into core, and also thinking about universal design for learning for all students. So really thinking about helping our general education teachers, our special education teachers, think about different ways that kids can receive information as well as express it, and having that in general education classrooms. And then finally, for our career and college readiness, we're really looking at on-track data for our students receiving special education services, as well as how we're grading things. And then, of course, always to improve our four-year graduation rates, looking at check-in connect programming with very specialized special education interventions incorporated into them. See, now I have to be my own clicker too. So when we talk about the community school models, I think it's very important that we are clear with families and our students and our teachers, what exactly we're expecting across the board in our community schools. And when I think about federal setting one or two services, are those kids who are receiving most of their special education services either in general education, or they might be getting pulled out, but for the majority of their day, they're spending that in general education? There's really three areas that we're focused on. One is advanced supports. And that's really supports that set up the conditions for learning. That could look like from our special education staff, pre-teaching concepts, pre-teaching vocabulary, providing sensory input before a lesson. It could be the conditions of the classroom and setting up that environment. We then move on to instructional supports that happen in general education and core instruction. Those might be direct instruction in that classroom. It could be modifications or accommodations that a student get, or it also could be a co-teaching model that might happen. And then third, every one of our schools has specialized instruction. And that specialized instruction could look like a pull-out class that might be re-teaching a concept. It could also be an intervention that looks at a specific skill that a student needs to work on. So that's the basis or the foundation that we want to provide in every community school when we look at this model. The other thing I want to just talk about is, one of the things we've done over the last couple of years is we've really transformed our professional instruction center. We've added more staff. We've cleaned out interventions. We've made sure that we've got top-of-the-line interventions coming in. And this, I just want to share with you, the framework that we use there. One is we know at every one of our sites, we have to provide good diagnostics. So we're really diagnosing educational issues and legging skills. Then moving into standard-based IEPs that are based on standards, as well as targeted objectives for students, that every student has an intervention plan through their IEP or their individualized education plan, that we expect all of our teachers and our special education assistants to help with progress monitoring. So we're looking at those interventions to make sure they're working for students. If they're not, we're re-looking, we're re-tooling, we're re-figuring out what else needs to happen. And then five, that they're really done with fidelity. So that's really our framework that we're doing in all of our, for all of our special education services. I want to talk just for a moment about school-based allocations. One of the things that we found when we looked at our, at our numbers and we looked at our data was that we had a lot of students receiving federal setting one, which is a minimal amount of special education services. But we didn't see a lot of kids with a more intensified special education service model that was in the general education setting. So one of the things we've added at one of our sites is, at some of our sites, called school-based allocations. It's really providing an extra special education teacher, special education assistance, and social work time to allow us to increase the intensity of what's happening for our students receiving special education services in general education. So it allows students to stay in their community school and not have to go to a citywide program as often as was happening before. This reduces transitions for our students and allows our students to be in their community school. Those teaching skills focus on socio-emotional as well as academics. This allows our schools to provide more flexibility in scheduling services for students so that we have more staff who can go with students in a wider variety of electives and core classes. It also helps support our students who might be in citywide programs, actually start to spend more time in general education. So you'll see as we look and we, as we move through models, you'll see this idea of school-based allocations. And I think it's been a really innovative approach that's allowed us to program for students in community schools in a much more appropriate way. So let's talk about our citywide special education programs. We've been tentatively layering those on to the different models as we move forward. This has been really important and probably an activity that as a director of special education, not many get to do. It's really looking at moving us from putting our citywide special education programs where there's space, which is what we've been doing for the last 20 years, to really intentionally designing those citywide special education programs where they should be. And that's those factors, modeling factors, we looked at students' home address. And that's those factors, modeling factors, we looked at students' home address, we looked at students' educational needs, we looked at the intensity of program they need, the type of disability they have, and also looked at the number of programs in relation with the general education classrooms. Now, while the comprehensive design gives us the opportunity to do that in a really wide way, I have to tell you, we do this every year. We're looking at our citywide special education programming every year because it's my responsibility to make sure that I have special education services that students have in their IEP at the sites where they need them. So we will continue to adjust that on a yearly basis and throughout this study. So what you'll see as we start to model out two through five, as we start to get closer to deciding what model we're going to be using, we're going to move classrooms equitably to be closer where students live rather than where there's space available in schools. We're going to look at our programming and special education, for special education services at magnets, and we're going to be very intentional about that. We're going to also reduce a portion of citywide special education programming where there are significant openings, which we often, which we're doing. So sometimes we have, at some of our sites, we've had less kids who need citywide programming, and so we're closing those and reopening those as school-based allocations, or maybe another disability area that has greater need for that year. So I wanted to touch just for a moment about magnet schools and special education. So when we looked at the centralized magnet school model, our families who are students receiving federal setting one and two services, so those are students where they spend most of their time in general education, would participate like any other student in the general education lottery. We are proposing that our families who receive federal setting three service or citywide programming would, for the first time, have a choice of magnets. And I want to say, that's pretty innovative. I think it's really exciting to think about our families really being able to choose possibly what the interest of their child is. It could be the arts, it could be STEM. When we look at this, will we be able to provide every student that opportunity of a magnet? No. But I think we're going to start and we're going to begin to look at that. When our families have students in a citywide special education programming, we're often very realistic to them that their choice becomes limited because we don't have them in every school, but I think this gives us an opportunity to start to give some of our families those experiences, as well as their students. Our families who receive special education programming in our fed-setting four programs would also be eligible for magnet programming based on their availability during their transition back to a setting three program. So to summarize, our magnet schools will have some of the following programming: citywide special education programming in a thoughtful and choice manner, and also school-based allocations to allow us to provide a little bit more intensity of programming there. Wanted to touch just for a minute about our specialized sites: Transition Plus, Early Childhood and Early Intervention, and our care and treatment services in local metro programs. Those school sites and programming will remain stable as we look at this modeling process. And just to give you an update on our federal setting four programming, they also will continue in the same locations. We know that our students, as they transition into a less restrictive setting, which is happening more and more as we get better and better at serving our students, will have options in both their community schools as well as magnet schools. I just wanted to touch briefly on the fact that both Riverbend and Harrison have amazing staff, their principals are dedicated, and things are really, really, we're really transforming what fed-setting four programming looks like. Our Riverbend group is working with LifeSpace for crisis intervention training and increasing academic rigor throughout the school, and Harrison is working on project-based learning and really digging in as a staff with the students about trauma-informed SEL practices.
Best presentation.
Hey, directors. Directors, we're going to do clarifying questions specifically about special ed, and then we're going to open up for general questions. So I needed to buzz in if you have clarifying questions about special ed specifically. Director Felder.
Can you tell me what the special, actually, it was really good. Can you just share with me what the special education lottery process looks like?
Yeah, so what I'm envisioning is we would have either different colored cards or the same cards. On our cards, it talks about whether a student is receiving 50% or more special education services 50% or more of their day. We would be able to pull those, and then we would look at those, and then place students into the citywide programming in those magnets.
Like, how many students, like, have you thought about, like, the number or percentage?
Yeah, so I'm thinking that we would have two classrooms in each magnet, which would be about 16 students.
Okay, thanks.
Director Enz?
Thank you, Chair Ellison. So the level-three programs now, the center-based level-three programs, under the redesign, they would potentially be in the magnets, right, is what you're saying, and in multiple magnets. How are they distributed now throughout the city?
So many of our magnets do not have citywide programming at all. Some of them do, but we don't place kids there based on their interest or their family's interest. So we consider them kind of like a community school. So when we look at our schools right now, we have some schools that have 3% of their population is special education, and we have some schools that is about 30%. So we really need to look at that and think about that. Our, when we look at our special education population, it's at 17% right now. We've been pretty stable over the last couple of years at 17%. When we look at the national average, it's 13%. So those schools that have 30% special education, that becomes pretty challenging to do inclusion well, to do core programming well. When we have a school that may have 3% special education population, those students are missing out on some really great peers and to understand the amazingness of differences and really understanding different abilities and the importance of that in their school community. So we need to intentionally design that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Felder, do you have another special ed question?
Can you tell me how special education and SPAN are different? And then also, if the SPAN looks into diversifying the SPAN quadrants or the SPAN groups that we have, to make sure that no school is given so many, because we do have that going on in North Minneapolis Franklin, and they run the culture. Are we going to look at diversifying this and spreading it out so it's more of a calmer climate?
Yeah, we will, we will start to decluster, I would say, some of the programming for either whether it's your EBD SPAN or whether it's other programming. We've talked a lot to our special education teachers and talked to them about these concepts, and they're very clear that they want at least two classrooms together. They feel like that collaboration is really important to them, so we've worked that into the model also. When we look at our programming for students, especially that have the socio-emotional needs and behavioral needs, the school-based allocations are another way to help provide a greater increase of intensity of service and more individualized attention to those students in the community schools also. So I think that also helps with the, as you called, spreading out of students across the entire district.
Good, thank you.
All right. Thank you. We do have one more section of the presentation about community, ongoing communications and engagement. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd like to have Executive Director Brown kind of speak to the continued opportunities for engagement and share a little bit about that with the board and public.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, Superintendent Graff, and members of the board. Just wanted to, I'm here as a representative of the division or the team in communications, engagement, and external relations, because the whole team has been involved in trying to make sure that all the various stakeholders involved in, who are impacted by the plan, are not only communicated to, but that we're hearing from those stakeholders. So there's a variety of, we've done, used a variety of vehicles. Some of the standard ones that you know about involve technology, which might be the survey, or there's the CDD digest videos that we've tried to do every week or every two weeks to talk about in plain terms what's happening. We just last night launched a CDD overview video, which is in all languages, all of these are in all four of our languages, by the way. Last night, a CDD overview video, which is quite encompassing of the entire effort and helps better understand how all the different elements are tied together and the comprehensive nature of the program. We've also got a Q and A webpage that we're getting translated that's added to Weekly that speaks to all the questions that we get. We get a lot of questions, hundreds of questions, that we're trying to break down to their essential elements and answer online. We're also, as you know, holding information sessions, listening and information sessions, five large ones that are formal that also have interpretation at them. But we're meeting with a variety of cultural groups, with all the PAC groups, with citywide student government, especially the engagement. Selena Martina and the engagement team are out talking to people at schools, people at partner organizations regularly to try to share information, learn what people are thinking, and then bring that feedback back so that we can use that in our communications as well as in the development of the plan. You want to go to the next one? So these are the upcoming listening sessions that'll be happening through January and February, including all of our PAC meetings. But then, on the next slide, you'll see some of the important efforts that we're doing better on this time, I think, in engaging the staff, because there's 7,000 people who need to know what's going on in our school district and that impacts their jobs. So we're talking about having school-based staff meetings at as many schools as possible, probably led by the principal and perhaps with some district leaders. We're having meetings, regular meetings with MFT. We've had professional development for ESPs, worked regularly with meetings with the principals and family liaisons are an enormous contact and connection for us with families, social workers. We're going to have Davis Center brown bag lunches, and then we're planning a staff survey on the models itself that'll hopefully be in February. So we're trying to do a bunch of different things that we've done before, trying to make sure that the communication is back and forth. Happy to answer any questions.
I think I would just add for the members of the public, and just a reminder, as far as our implementation work, the final comprehensive district design proposal development will be informed by our engagement work. As mentioned by Chief Moore, we're going to be looking at taking that information back from those conversations. We'll also, prior to the board vote, look at our projected magnet enrollment based on placement protocols, specific academic investments, and some of the financial projections. And then, once a decision is made around how we're moving forward as a district, we do have other very significant work that has to be done. You've heard us talk about our bell time changes, we can align our bell times, talking about the finalizing of our walk zones, looking at those critical placement protocols. We had conversation today in our policy committee meeting about the timeline for those discussions, which will impact our lottery rules and designs. Obviously, related to this is our capital investments and what our capital planning looks like, so we will see that work happening once final decisions have been made. And depending on other things, the conversation about our schools and our sustainability of our schools and our programming. Also important, as we go to some type of implementation and transition of schools and boundaries, would be the grandfathering decisions, and then, of course, working on the implementation plan, particularly relating to staff with those shifts of personnel. So that's a lot that has to go into work once a decision has been made on where we land, and so I just want to acknowledge that that's all part of implementation discussion work that needs to take place, and certainly we'll be looking for more engagement and involvement with staff around that process. And then, finally, you can see the timeline. As mentioned, March 24th is the goal for us to bring forward considerations for a proposal to the board, and then, based on that conversation, coming back on the 14th of April for a board final decision.
Board members, if you have any general questions right now, start with student rep.
Okay. So, you know, I do appreciate the amount of engagement that has been put towards this plan, but I'll be honest, it has been kind of lacking among students. If I were to go into any classroom in my school and say the words comprehensive district design, I would get complete blank stares. So I feel like having that listening session yesterday at South among city leaders and citywide was great, but I just wish we were able to have the conversation in every classroom, not just with a dozen or few of us. So, you know, we can do small things like show the CDD digest during advisory at school or have that 10-minute video be showed so students at least know what's going on. And if you want, we can, we've had days where we've taken social studies hours to, like, talk to teachers about certain issues. We've had raised a justice day. If we could take some allotted amount of time, either from extra time in the day, a social studies class or whatever, just to inform students, maybe hold that small conversation, and, you know, use that as feedback rather than just the dozen of us that were there yesterday.
Representative Janine, I appreciate that. I think the other thing that really is important for us to recognize is that we did not have a model to present than what we created for this board meeting, so I think there was some difficulty with understanding what we were going to be presenting. So I think we took that as the first opportunity with the citywide government leadership group to share that information. I do know there is a plan for additional engagement with not only our community but with our schools, and I think looking at the best way to support that engagement, I think we're open to that. I know we definitely want the student voice and input, and we also want to make sure that it's aligned to what's happening in the classroom, you know, so we don't want to overstep what those conversations are in the classroom related to the curriculum. But I think we can definitely take note of those opportunities that you've mentioned.
Thank you. Director Enz?
Thanks, Chair Ellison. I have just a few concerns I'm going to run through. I don't necessarily need responses to them right now, but I just want to make sure that you're aware of some of them. And of course, this doesn't preclude further concerns in the future or, you know, things that I'm missing right now, but just a few that come to mind. And I'll go backwards, starting with the engagement piece, and this is maybe just could be answered with a clarification, but the staff engagement slide where it says, "In addition, accessing all communications and public meetings," and then there's two bullet points. I'm assuming that the meetings with internal stakeholders, that's not like one meeting with all the internal stakeholders there, that's just representative of the fact that you're engaging with all those different stakeholders in different ways at various times as well. I'm not sure that, I'd be interested in hearing more about that, and certainly, we're not going to get anywhere unless our school community and our stakeholders are invested in this as well. So I just want to get, that's, you're nodding, so I assume, yeah, okay, thank you. All right. And then, I'm also concerned about the, I asked a question at the, I think it was the pre, one of these committee of the holes about magnet schools and magnet programming, and specifically IB, and one of the reasons given for the rationale behind magnet programming and why we choose a certain programming for magnets and why we don't is because we don't want magnets that are competitive with community schools, and yet, I see that there is no IB, PYP, magnet school, yet it was considered a desirous magnet program in the surveys that we received. I'm not sure where it ranked, but it's been dropped, and I know that we don't have any plans for any PYP, IB magnet program, and that's a concern of mine. Also, I'd like to express a little bit of concern, and I don't know if this relates to the CDD in particular or the academic plan, rather, but the K2 academic plan, and I just want to learn more about that. I have concerns about assessments in kindergarten. I have concerns about assessments in kindergarten and assessments in first grade, early grades, and a balance between sort of whole-child academic growth and assessments and academic rigor, and I think we have to be really careful about that. And it can be off-putting, not just, you know, it can be off-putting to parents, but also, you know, we want to make sure that we're, and I want to give you an opportunity, because there is a lot of criticism in the community, and I have my own concerns as well with regard to what kind of academic programming we're providing to kindergarteners. I just think that's, and I wouldn't even go so far as to go back to pre-K as well. And are we bringing assessments even into pre-K? And I want to learn more about that, and that's not necessarily about the, but it did come up on one of the slides, so I'd be interested in hearing more about that. So I'll leave it at that. Those are concerns that I have at this point. Of course, there's other, more specific things about, like, maybe a walk zone here, a boundary there, does this belong here, why is this choice made here, but I don't want to get into a long discussion about that right now. So I know that we could derail the whole conversation if each one of us brought up a specific concern about where a line was drawn right now, so, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Director Weller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember when the committee of the whole met, gosh, was it a year and a half ago? And the board was asked to come up with a profile of a graduate, with a little exercise. And looking back, it seems to me that that was what has emerged to be kind of a pattern. Don't ask parents, don't ask teachers, don't ask the community. When the first round of studies was presented last May, I remember a sign at the back of the room that some parents brought, and it read, "Nunca nos preguntaron." Sorry for my pronunciation. In English, that's, "They never asked us." And what I hear repeatedly in our communities is that that pattern has continued over and over and over. In the place of the voices of parents and teachers and community, we get graphs and models and numbers. That doesn't make sense to me. Doesn't make sense. Now, the question I was going to ask earlier had to do with the research, and it kind of piggybacked on the question that Director Ins brought up. And in our family, we have kind of a joke at the dinner table, which is, oh, somebody says something, and you say, "Where'd you get that? I got that on the internet," right? And one of the things that I hope, well, actually, I know that some of our teachers are doing this, because my kids went through the system, is how to critically evaluate data, because all data is not equal, right? So there's good data and there's not good data. And that's true with respect to research having to do with K-8 schools, right? It's not all equal. And so I'm wondering, when will there be an opportunity? I mean, there, I'm sure you're well aware, and folks at this table are well aware, that there are a number of people in our community who have done some really solid research, investigating and looking at this, you know, what are the quality of your sources? What's the quality of the research? How does it apply to the situation? Will there be an opportunity to engage with those people? Because they reach very different conclusions than you are reaching. So that's a question that I want to put out there. And furthermore, speaking of K-8 schools, I don't know how many people in this room are aware that a new K-8 school has just received planning approval in northeast Minneapolis. Somebody thinks that K-8 is a good idea, and it's not us, apparently. And you know that there's another K-8 system compared to ours that actually includes K-8 in their logo. But even more important to me are the voices that I've been listening to of our immigrant families, who have carefully explained their reasons for preferring K-8 schools in terms of safety, support for their families, and the convenience of having to deal with two school sites as opposed to three sites when you have a large family and possibly more than one job. Those are pretty compelling reasons to me, and they have said very clearly, many people have said that very clearly, but this plan does the exact opposite. And that really struck home to me at an event recently where I heard someone say, and I'm translating here, that these are community, we all know about the larger political environment we're living in. These are communities that are already under stress, and to them, what they're hearing in this plan is more stress, more challenge, "another attack" was the word that was used. When an important and hurting part of our community is having their voice ignored by this plan, I'm seriously disturbed. I'm only going to talk about one other thing. I had a big, long thing planned, but I'm going to cut to the chase, and that last thing is trust. I've had a number of emails from people talking about the issue of trust. Trust is essential to the future of Minneapolis Public Schools, because we, as an institution, ask families to entrust their children to us. And Minneapolis Public Schools has, as everyone in this room, as I'm sure well aware, had an issue with trust for a long time in various communities around this city. Back in May, I said that the process, as it had unfolded to that point, had already eroded trust, and my observation at this point is that that has continued. This process has done damage to Minneapolis Public Schools by the process, the way it's been done, and by the result that's being put in front of people today. I have deep concern, I share the concern of these families for the long-term well-being of this system. This is a system that belongs to all of us, and as a member of this board, I regard it as part of my responsibility, not only to consider what's happening at the present moment, but to look for the long-term well-being of this institution. And in that light, it is particularly concerning to me that none of the models, which have a number here and a number there, there is no comprehensive fiscal discussion of this, there is no taking into account the attrition. The move from away from K-8s to all K-5/6s ignores our own data that shows that that's a breakpoint for increasing loss of students. For the long-term, excuse me, for the long-term health of this institution, these are all issues that are deeply concerning to me, and I think, and I don't know where it goes from here, but I, if other people share those concerns, I sure hope you speak up, because I believe, I believe I'm not speaking just from my point of view, but I'm sharing the views that I'm hearing widely across this district. And the other thing I will say, that I'm absolutely available. I will come to your school, to meet you for coffee, to sit down with you with communities across the city. I've done that, including people who have opposite views to mine. I'm not afraid of that, that's fine. If you want to engage with me, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Mr. Polly.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been summarized, so I appreciate that. Appreciate the fact that we're talking about the opportunity gap very openly. As a former teacher, Minneapolis Public Schools is something that we talked about in our classrooms and in our, kind of, my colleagues, about how we give some students opportunities and others we don't give the same, and we expect them all to be successful. And I think in a lot of ways, our opportunity gap leads into the achievement gap that we talk about so often. And I think MPS has been shortchanging many students over the years, especially our students of color, our students with disabilities, and our students in north and northeast. This has been throughout our district's existence. I don't think we've equitably distributed our resources, our staff, our teachers, our programs, in a way to set these students up for success, and I think it's a responsibility of this board and as our community as a whole, to make sure that wherever we send our kids, they have, they receive an excellent education. So one of the things I'm really looking forward to hearing more about over the next months is just from our academic folks, about how these models do or do not allow for us to better support our students. Thank you.
Director Arneson.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. I think, we're kind of sharing a mic here. Okay. I'm going to try and get through this without coughing. All right. So thank you for presenting, and I do actually want to kind of hear more from you. So this is, I have a comment, but it goes into a question, and maybe you can choose how to elaborate, particularly that academic vision. Earlier, you were speaking about the visual elements of pride that people feel, like you see the pride when people feel connected to their schools. And that really resonates with me, particularly, it resonates from a place of how painful it is when you're in a community that wants that, but doesn't feel like they have that. And when they watch others who do have that, and they wish that they could have that. A northeast resident once told me, "It's like rolling a shopping cart full of rocks up a hill backwards, and sometimes I just, someone, I just wish someone would help us." So I heard you get fired up about contrasting the models and what that means for opportunities, and I would really actually like to hear more about that, and I guess I appreciate that passion, and I appreciate the just well-thought-out, intentional, special ed. discussion as well. But before you speak, I want to provide some more context, and I want to be really specific about what a lack of opportunity means or looks like in some of our schools, because that seems to be debated. So I did interview about 100 people this summer in District One. We had some focus groups in northeast, and so these are some quotes that they gave me. Pillsbury is our community school, but we went to another school because it offered more opportunities for our kids. Aside from gems and guys, we have no enrichment opportunities at our school, and there is no childcare at our site. When I said my youngest child was going to Sheridan, other MPS staff and parents actively steered me away with disparaging comments. People aren't choosing away from Sheridan, they are choosing away from race and perceived behavior. Special education pathways and school designations contribute to structural segregation in our neighborhood. It's most important that we balance resources. It's so obvious that white schools have more resources in MPS. Our school last banned for a year, it just went away overnight. And they said, over and over again, "I want a well-rounded education for my child." They were talking about things like getting to have something after school. They were talking about seeing their school represented at the district-wide chess tournament. They were talking about, like, being meaningful, like, having not just activities listed on paper, but actually the follow-through in which it could happen. They said things like, they don't, they said things like, "We know there are magnets, but we don't really understand what they are, because they don't exist for us, and they lack integrity when they're here." They recognize, they know what this is, so it's not confusing, and I just, they're not really debating the chart that you presented here, and if it's real or not, because that's not, they know it's real. So I just want to be really clear about that, and I want to add that I'm a social worker, and I'm grounded in systems theory. And I've said that before, but I think it's really important to repeat, that our profession has a fundamental belief that any intervention cannot be successful without acknowledging the systems that interact with the individual. Education as a trend gravitates towards sorting schools individually and targeting intervention to the individual, which is contrary to systems theory in social work. And this is understandable, because education is deeply personal, and it's an individual experience. So it, any talk of change feels alarming, and it feels like unnecessary chaos. And as parents, we're always going to go to a place of protecting our children from risks, like, that's our job as parents. And yet, I think we don't want to inadvertently tell families, the families who said these things, like, "I just want a well-rounded education for my child, why can't we have that?" I don't think we want to tell them that, in fact, they know they are missing opportunities, and I don't think we want to tell them that they are not valued in our system, because that is the message that they are hearing currently. And I don't think that's our intention when we're trying to protect our children, but you need to, we need to believe that others take that a different way. So I'd really just like to use this moment, I just feel like, I know you have, I think it would be great if you could tell us a little bit more, like, how you're dreaming bigger for all of our kids, even if it comes with uncertainty, and what the trade-offs are between particularly the Model 1 and the other models. Just take a moment to just reiterate, or something that you maybe didn't get to, particularly around academic vision.
Director Arneson, thank you for your comments, and, you know, I think, hopefully you read through the lines in my comments at northeast, but also here, that it is deeper than a structure change, in my lens, from the academic piece, that we're talking about mindsets. And I know it sounds vague, and I know it sounds abstract, but really, at the heart of the work, when we're looking at closing the achievement gap here in Minneapolis Public Schools, we can fail or succeed with any structure, but that's going to be dependent on how we, as educators, come into the schools, how we teach, how we instruct. And again, I want to point out, I think this is a very good moment to point out, that the focus, again, even looking at the K-8, 6, 8 models, is the achievement gap, the achievement of students of color. So we have some phenomenal K-8s, I will not disagree, but even within those K-8s, we have students who, students of color are 16% proficient in math, while their white counterparts are 70% proficient in math. That is unacceptable. So regardless of a structure change, we need to have a change that increases the ability for our students of color to access a well-rounded education. So we can go to structure, we can go to this, we can go to that, but the heart of the conversation is what are we doing to change our practice? Policies is one thing, what are we doing? So when I presented the academic plan back in October, and I think this came up with the K-2 literacy mess somewhere, maybe it was Director Ins mentioned that, so we've already started that work. And the best way that I can put it is that it can be replicated much easier if we had the community school models. So you're going to hear this upcoming in February, but we took some pilot sites, and we really focused a lot on math. We didn't put extra staffing in, we didn't even have extra money. We just said, "Let's do what we can do, what we know is best for students." And we have racially-isolated schools that have doubled their percentage of kindergartners who are ready for first grade here at the winter assessment. So last year at this time, only 39% of their kindergartners were on track, and today, we're talking 70%. This is what we're talking about, increasing our students' access to an education, because if they don't get a good foundation in K-1, 2, what are we expecting to happen by the time they get to middle school and high school? Right? So this is about being able to be intentional, specific with the research we have, but again, how do we replicate this across 74 schools? Right? We took five schools, and we, you know, dug in deep, the principals were on board, the teachers have been amazing, it's awesome to see them work in these teams and to have these conversations, and that kind of goes also back to the assessment question. It's how you define assessment. The teachers were just looking day by day and addressing the students where they needed to be. You could call it assessment, you don't have to, but that was the work that they've been doing, and it's not just at the one school that I listed, but we have some schools who are non-racial identified sites. They targeted the students, the five students that did not meet in the fall, and those five are all now exceeding. So, I mean, that reduces the achievement gap right there, even though they did have a far greater number who were proficient to begin with in the fall. But that is the intentional work that is happening right now, and that is what I would hope to see if we were able to go to the community school model, because the work that the teachers are doing, we're not just informed by what we were doing leading in academics, but it was with their, with their community as a whole. It was engaging the families, making sure the families knew where the students were at, right? What else needs to happen? How can we support you? What can we do at the school? And so I think that's really in response to the K-2 piece, and so the work is moving right now, but when I take a 30,000-foot view, I'm a little overwhelmed how we do this in all of our schools, if we don't change some things, right? Because right now, we're just, you know, we'll try to help you, and we'll try to help you, and try to help you, but we need to be able to change some things so that we can make this accessible to all of our students. So that's one very concrete example. But there's an accountability, too. There's accountability to myself, there's accountability to those who work in Minneapolis Public Schools, that if we're going to say that we're going to have culturally-sustaining pedagogy, then we are going to do that, even if that makes me uncomfortable, even if that makes me have to go and research and learn to teach something that I never learned in my education. And so there's this element of, how do we, how do we have the resources, how do we have the time and the space to be able to provide those pieces? But when we do, then we hold But when we do, then we hold people accountable to that.
I'd just like to add three key points for me of what the comprehensive design will do. I believe it really allows our special education staff to be specialist in, in specialized instruction, leaving the content expertise to our general education peers. I believe if we can get to that model, we can really focus on interventions and really understanding how kids learn. I think the other piece that we have got to get to, and I think the comprehensive design can help us, is that special education cannot be a place anymore. That's the system we built. We have built, you go there to get the services. Special education is a service, and we can provide that service in all of our schools. And finally, I believe the comprehensive design says to our students with disabilities, as well as their families, that you belong. You belong in your school. Not that we can't serve you, not that we wish we could serve you, but you're going to belong. To me, that's invaluable for our families.
Thank you.
There was a difference between Models One versus Two through Five. I'm sure that as is current state, you're looking at 14 schools below 350, eight of which are in Zone One. And so as we talk about Model One, status quo, if we're having to close a significant number of schools, you're looking at closing those schools on the backs of, of black and brown children and working-class folks. Going to, to Model Two through Five, you reduce the number of schools below 350 to eight, two of which are in Zone One.
Thank you, Director Felder.
Yes, so I get a lot, out in the community, I've been really moving it through my neighborhood associations, and I get a lot of questions back and comments. And one of the comments that I get from some of my parents is that the survey is biased. And so I just wanted to share that part. And then, talking about the weight, you know, if you get 2,000 South Side and you get 500 North Side, how is that going to reflect what the district really wants and needs when we really want and need that? I mean, we talk about, I mean, we just got a band class at one of my high schools. Right? We are that community. You talked about those communities of color, and I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, are you talking about me? I'm, thank you, thank you very much, my community." And so I don't mean to come with so much aggression. I know I start off like, "Grrr," because I've been holding it in all week. But, you know, just the different pieces that we have, like putting it on paper so that people can write it down, because some people aren't using the computer that want to weigh in, and making sure that those are handed out so we can do those pieces and collect those students. And then looking at the listening sessions, we start off on the 30th with the District Red Focus and District Parent Advisory Council. Instead of having all of the advisory councils together in the beginning, we should have one at the end as well, because everybody's really just trying to figure out, this is a lot of information, and everybody's just trying to figure out where they are first before we start trying to mix it up and how we can work together. I think that would be really great, and they were thinking about that. And then also, the next, I have actually a question. When we look at the programming that we are very much lacking in North Minneapolis, and you guys have already run 13 legs of the race, and we've only run eight with one shoe, and you finally give us the other shoe, is that what we're going to call equity? Because that's what it looks like to be, and I've been watching it for a very long time, 2010, out there, sitting in that seat. And, and so those are the pieces that I'm looking at, like, and how are we going to bring our students back into the fold? We talked about white flight, you know, there is white flight. My kid does not need to sit by a white kid. You know, we live over north, it's going to happen. He's going to sit by a monk kid and a Somali kid and a Latino kid or a Chicano kid, because we live over north, and that's just going to happen, and I love that. But basing it on that piece, are we educating our brown and black children? That should always be the most focused thought at the forefront of this plan, not whether, who they're sitting by. I, I don't care, because we have to bring in those parents from, you know, Columbia Heights and New Brighton, New Brighton closed down on Northeast kids, because they didn't have enough for their own kids, because there was so much, you know, white flight. And then we have to start talking to our parents and our kids and saying, "Why are you leaving anyway? Like, what's wrong with this brown person? Do we have something to talk about? You know, are we going to start having hard conversations in the school about racism? What is that? How, what does it look like? You know, because we have to stop it, because as it goes on, it perpetuates, because people get hired here. Right? And then nobody notices what the issue is. And so I'm just saying that, I mean, let's play it for the long game, let's play the long game. You know, because this short-term fixing it makes everyone uneasy. And, you know, and just say, "We're going to do what we want to do, because we're Minneapolis." That's what we're supposed to be like anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Caprini?
Thank you. So I'm so sorry, did I smash? Did I, oh, I thought I pinched your hand, sorry. So I actually want to put a pin in one thing, and that's in regards to the CTE career, Career Technical Engineering Exploration for Sixth through Tenth Grade. I'm going to put a pin in that and ask later if there's time, or maybe we can just chill tomorrow and I can have a conversation with someone about that, because I want to ask a question. We ask, "Where is the North Side?" We ask, "Where are the people of color?" And I want to ask, "Where are the middle-class black families?" I want to ask, "Where are they?" They are gone. Why are they gone? Because consistently, since the moment I've had a child in Minneapolis Public Schools, now I have a 20-year-old, third year at the U, consistently since I've had a child at Minneapolis Public Schools, there have been attempts to make some real changes happen in a district that's not serving all students. Year after year, time after time, we show up, we listen to plans, and then we listen to the community, Director Walzer. We listen to the community and we stop. And then we perpetuate the very same problems we're trying to fix today. I have a 16-year-old sophomore. She has transitioned every two years, because we cannot get it together and recognize that it's not just about you, it's not just about me, it is about the bigger scheme of things. So when Dr. Fearing says she has to helicopter up 30 feet to get a look at a big perspective of a district that at one time was 50,000 people, over the last 10 years, we have lost so many families. Where are the, where are the middle-class black families? They have left. And what have we done? We've come up with plans and then we've taken that can and kicked it so far down the street, because what did we do? We listened to the community, because they didn't like the idea, they didn't want the plan. And here we are again, yes, I'm repeating myself, because I want to be really clear. Here we are again. In 2020, I have a 16-year-old that has transitioned every two years and lost programming in each of the schools that she has attended. You want to talk about piecemealing things together? Let's talk about five parents trying to fundraise for a school that desperately wants to be able to do a field trip. Let's talk about students who have not even had an opportunity to look at an instrument, but know they're in a closet gathering dust. Let's talk about a kindergartner that at one time was able to, first step, you're going to learn to look down at your feet at a Kleenex box, and then lift up and say, "Thank you." First step to learn how to use the violin. Jenny Lynn's music program was one of the hottest, most incredible programs, completely destroyed. And year after year, the district shows up with a plan, and we don't like it, because we are going to be affected, my child's going to be affected. Guess what? A lot of the people in this room, your children have never been affected, have never been affected. Every single student that has attended school with both my daughters has been affected. And guess what happens? This area empties out, all right? We get turnover in positions. We go through superintendent searches, we start changing all of these associate superintendents, and change and change and change, but guess what doesn't change? Outcomes. And for me, personally, the MCA's really don't mean a lot to me. I know they mean a lot to a lot of people. So I'm not out here to say it shouldn't mean something to you. Experience an opportunity. And if you think for one second I did not rub two rocks together to make sure that I could, make sure that my children had opportunities that I know we couldn't afford, I certainly did. So what I'm saying is this, I am sick and tired of kicking a can. I do not want to be back here in 15 years, trying to solve a problem for 14,000 students. Where are the middle-class black families? They have left. Who's next? What community is next to leave? Because I guarantee you, we keep doing this and we, we continue to not serve the needs of the most vulnerable students. And guess what? This plan, one of these models, does. A lot of you folks out here and out there that are able to supplement your child's education have to recognize that, yes, you are going to have to make some sacrifices, but not the most vulnerable. Back to the Career Technical Education Exploration question, I want to know, how are we going to be able to double down for Sixth through Tenth Graders? Because I understand that Henry potentially will be losing their engineering program, and I am not happy with that, but I do understand that change needs to happen. So when it comes to robotics, is that something that they would still be able to get funding for after school through this Carl Perkins grant? I don't know. But I'm concerned about electives for Ninth and Tenth Graders. What are they doing? Because if we're going to shift away from something in some of these schools that have continually been shaved at, because yes, again, yes, again, Henry will be losing quite a bit of stuff. Please, please, I appreciate the acknowledgement, but I need you not to do that right now. Answer the question, thank you.
Thank you for that, Director Caprini. So again, this is a proposed model, and so we still have to engage our communities and get feedback on it, and I think that's where the strength of being able to figure out where exactly everything is going to go. But I have been in conversation with Principal Youssef about it. I think it, I don't take it lightly when buildings have something and it's been a value-add to their building. And I use that word because I think about if you have a CTE program in your school, it's very convenient for students to then be able to, you know, engage with it even after school. So it's not just a course material, but it's actually something that you can use after school, such as robotics. And so I've been engaging with Principal Youssef about talking about kind of what does this all mean for Henry? And then he in turn will be engaging his staff, or maybe he has already since our last conversation. But I think one of the things to think about is that we have a lot of schools, the way the CTE has been set up right now, we have a lot of schools that have never had any access to any of the CTE programming. And I'll just speak local and immediate, so at Wallstone, we, when I was the principal, I keep talking in present tense, but when, when I was the principal, we did not have the opportunity to have any CTE programming, and we had a group of students, East African students, that were very interested in robotics and engineering. And so we kind of put together a section so they could take engineering, but then we were able to get a lot of grant support, so through Boston Scientific, through First Robotics, even Amazon. We did a walk-through and a tour, and then, woo, we got, you know, a check for helping out. And so, I mean, we're not winning any tournaments, maybe in the future, but one of the things that it did is that it allowed our students to still get that experience, to, they had never participated in a big tournament, they went, they built the robot. As a building principal, I was also able to make sure that the teacher who's leading it was paid and things like that to sustain it. So it is possible. I guess I wanted to put it out there. Would it be as robust as if we actually had a robotics program in our building as a CTE? Probably not. But again, that's one of the things that we were looking at, and that was one of the main guiding questions, is what is a value-add to your school if you do host a CTE programming? And has that been placed, have they been placed equitably to begin with? Because some of our buildings, and not just Henry, but a lot of our other buildings have access to CTE programming, it's a local and immediate for the students, but has it been accessible citywide to all the students? Because it's supposed to be citywide. And so I don't have a concrete answer about what the future will hold for engineering and robotics for Henry, because that's something that we still need to get community feedback, I still need to process with the high school principals. But I wanted to make sure that at least all of you were able to see the first kind of model of what we're looking at for CTE. There's the other pieces that, that were unassigned, and again, those will be part of the conversation with communities. And I've really been asking our high school principals to think about, what do you want your school to be known for? What's your mantra? What are you, what will you stand on a hill to die in? What do you, what is your selling point of your high school? And if that doesn't fit the vision of a CTE, of the CTE programming that you host right now, then we can find other ways of ramping up your electives, but maybe you want electives that are more focused on whatever your, your building mantra is. And it's been really great for me, because I was, you know, whatever, six months their colleague before, and now I'm in this position, but to hear them talk about their schools and what they're proud of and why students come to their schools. And then my next follow-up question is, how can academics support that? Right? So if the vision of your school is to be, you know, advanced academics, college prep, right? Then how do you, how do you see all of the courses that you offer, the, the teachers that you have, the programs, the, the post-secondary, concurrent, how does that all fit? You know, or are there pieces where you would like to maybe slide that over and bring something else in that you haven't had access to before? So those are some deeper conversations that I've been having with high school principals, and then saying, "Does any of these CTE programs align to your vision of your high school?" Because again, as we're doing the comprehensive district design, it's just as a relevant conversation, the high school's as a community school, what does your community want you to be? Because we want your community to go to your high school, because they have what the community wants to see offered there. So we're in very preliminary conversations, as it were, but I think it's something important that I'm hoping that the building leads are engaging their staff and their families in about, you know, this is a chance to really think about our high schools as well, not just this K-5, 6, 8 trajectory.
A little past nine, but Director Jordan has been waiting to speak for a while, so Director Jordan, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Most of my stuff has been addressed. But can you clarify, we're talking about the community engagement, I know I've heard on different occasions that, yes, there's models, but moving forward, we can adapt these models, we can also maybe possibly even look at picking different parts of different models to come up with a, with a plan. That is still on the table, right? So we're not saying everyone, this is Model Two, but we can take, say, something out of Model Two along with Model Four, Model Five, and create something like that. That is still, that is still being talked about, correct? Just to clarify, because I've...
Director Jordan, what we attempted to accomplish was by the feedback that we initially heard through some of our initial, our discussions with the design, was to put together packages of the public, the board to consider. Obviously, as we've rolled out these models here tonight for the first time, or second time publicly, we're going to get feedback, and so I think that's part of the process. We have to capture all of that feedback through the various sessions that we have, and then come together and make some decisions around how we're going to present what we believe is going to do the best work possible for our students. And so it really is, not to minimize this, it really is about our values. And, you know, I think we can all stay here tonight for many more hours and talk about what we feel is important, what we think is important, and, you know, we're just trying to put all this information together into something that will lead us down that path of improvement for, for all of our students, creating those conditions for success for all of our students in all of our schools.
Yeah, because just because I was at Northeast Middle... Yeah, because just because I was at Northeast Middle, and one of the conversations I had was a parent saying, well, I like this part of 2, I like this part of 3, I like this part of 5. Are you guys, is that still an option? Because even the parents that I've heard that you guys, I mean, based on feedback, it's not, everyone's going to get stuck in 2. And I was like, yes, I'll ask him.
So we have to take, we have to take all of that back, and we'll then again have to consider how we model for that, what that looks like. And so we're waiting to, to go through all of our sessions so we can capture as much information as possible.
Because I know, this is more of a comment for, for the folks and great presentation tonight. I know that moving forward too, you know, there's, there's some of the emails that I think we've all gotten in terms of, you know, people like their K-8s and people like their 6-8 and whatnot. And one of the things I think we, we need to be cognizant of, whether you're 4K8s or not, or whatever the situation is, is that at the end of the day, the traditional K-5, 6-8 model does not work for everybody. Some people prefer the 6-8s. I know Director Walzer had spoken to it as well, so I'm not going to rehash what he said. But also too, I think, you know, we, we should be looking at sometimes expanding programs instead of contracting them. I, I think with, in regards to our dual immersion program, people want that, that dual immersion. And moving it to Green Central and two of the models, to me, and to what I've, what I've heard from people feedback-wise is, you're not really moving a program, you're replacing one, and there's no guarantee that we'll have that same buy-in from the community if it's moving out of Wyndham to Green Central. I could be wrong about that. But I think expanding our programs in North Minneapolis and other sites that really value our dual immersion, as well as Montessori. We spend an exorbitant amount of money for our Montessori teachers and our staff and their training. Now, there is not enough Montessori positions in our district, but we have spent thousands of dollars on our Montessori staff. Now, I guarantee you, there are other districts and charters that are watching what we do. And if we contract our Montessori program, go from 2 to 1, I guarantee you, other districts will eye up our Montessori teachers, because they can't all fit in Seward, right? So what will happen is, all the money and time and effort we've spent in our Montessori teachers, another district will take advantage of. They will save time, money, and effort in recruiting, retaining, and teaching, and certifying those Montessori teachers. And we will be out a great staff of Montessori teachers and, and our, our support staff as well. So that's something to consider. And how do we, how do we move forward? I know we have the K-8 model for Montessori. When Jesse, and I'll end with this really quick, because I know we are out of time. When Jesse left Seward, Longfellow, as a K-5, he was the last 5th grade class out of there, he ended up at Seward, which was, was a K-8, but it's a Montessori K-5. But much like Lizzie and Max are experiencing this year, going into Seward as a 6th grader and seeing that community built from, a lot of the families that were there from kindergarten all the way through 6th grade, you see the camaraderie among families, community, staff, that go far beyond a test score. You see development of social-emotional learning and all those aspects. And so when Jesse and some other Longfellow kids came in there in 6th grade, it was, you know, a little bit different, because everybody had gone through K-5 with them as a Montessori and knew each other all the way through 8th grade. Most of them ended up at South, et cetera. So I think moving forward, yes, we, I think, we're at with our next steps. I think we should, you know, continue with a positive dialogue, whether, you know, because we don't have a plan yet. So we just have the proposals and, and the discussions that we have coming up. I thought Northeast went relatively well last night. And, and I think people are relatively well-engaged. And I, and I appreciated the comments that I heard last night at, at Northeast Middle, which is a fantastic school. I've only been there like twice, and I, and I forgot how, how good of a beautiful school Northeast is, seriously. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, staff. Thank you, board members. This was a great conversation tonight. Sorry we're a little late, but my big for done. Thank you.